I think so. Hey, this is gonna be fun.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Do you have it set up so that I can have you things on? So, I called this meeting of the special meeting of the Wood Creek City Council on May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three at six-thirty. We're here at City Callin' and calling the meeting to deliver. I ask everyone to rise for a moment of silence and then stay standing for a second. Thank you. But to make this, to the people of the state, and to the republic from which we stand, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Honored under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one individual. Please say, Mary Cole.
Mayor Joe Roscoe.
Here.
Mayor Chris Andrew Foley.
Here.
Councilmember Dana Avery. Here. Councilmember Chris Germer.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hamer.
Here.
Councilmember Devin Lyons. Here.
There's a special meeting, so we need four per form that we have, so we can have the form established. Have a number of public comments. I'm gonna go ahead and read one that was received and asked me to read from Maureen Mealy. Their PNC and C Council, we are focused alone about ground pools in the city of Wood Creek. We feel that these pools do not fit with the aesthetic of the neighborhood. Thank you, Maureen and Patrick Mealy. And first on the list of people who signed up, Aurora LaBrone, or Mayor for again.
I am Aurora LaBrone. I am a resident of Temple, so circle city of Wood Creek for the past thirty-eight years. I am here to attend the meeting, but I'm here in my three minutes to Mr. William Shield.
All right, Mr. Eric. Mayor Espland?
Yes, I'm Eric Espland. I live at one eighty-four Augusta Drive, and I am here to give my three minutes to Mr. Shield, Mayor Shield. All right.
So, number three, Mayor Gloria Whitehead.
Yes, I'm Gloria Mykid. I live at Seventeen Temple Brook Lane, and I am here to also yield my three minutes to Mayor Shield. Thank you.
Well, Mayor, that's up to you now.
That's a heavy burden to have to speak for all of those folks. I want to talk to you tonight about governance. Something seems to have gotten lost along the way over the years with city council here, and we don't seem to be able to do governance in proper form. And I've, my being here and my addressing that is the result of the rather unfortunate and misguided action which this council took on March eighth in regard to short-term rentals. Let me tell you where I'm coming from. You, I know some of you have expressed the fact that you thought that some of us old birds were has-beens. And maybe that's true. I has been in a number of places doing things like advising folks how to do governance. I did that in my career for seventeen years, where I traveled through six states visiting the nonprofit organizations about the proper way to operate a nonprofit, to govern a nonprofit organization. I have an earned doctorate in organizational leadership. I've been a property owner in Wood Creek for thirty-three years, permanent full-time resident for fifteen. I have been the board president of nonprofit organization with a thirteen-million-dollar budget and probably eighty-plus employees. I've served five terms on this council, one term as mayor. So I think I know something about governance. I want to share, I'm not gonna tell you everything I know about governance. You can be relieved about that. This council is a board. It's a board of a nonprofit organization, so the analogies I'm making come appropriately and with experience. And there are several models for board governance, but all of those models here commonality. And that is that a board or a council is responsible mainly for strategic planning, for budget policies, and for the oversight of committees. And most day-to-day responsibilities are delegated to a CEO, in our case, a city manager. And the board then is responsible for hiring and managing the city manager. And council meetings should focus mainly on policy. One of the things that boards do to enhance their understanding of functions and help them make policy or is that they create commissions or committees, of which there are three kinds: a standing committee, a policy task force, or a working committee that works with the CEO to accomplish delegated tasks. And one such committee in our city is, or has been, the P and Z Commission Planning and Zoning Commission, a standing committee. And that committee sometime in the recent past was charged with investigating the possibility of short-term rentals in Wood Creek. Don't know why, nobody in Wood Creek in the last twenty-five years has asked to have short-term rentals. Number of citizens on surveys that we have sent out over the last fourteen years have specifically said, "Don't have short-term rentals." I read all the comments, which was on all those surveys, and I found two citizens who, over those three surveys, had said, "Let's have short-term rentals." The commission held a number of meetings, held public hearings on March first, which confirmed what our citizens have been telling us for many years. And to quote a comment from the most recent citizen survey, somebody said, quote, "Please leave Wood Creek the way it is." And that's what P and Z recommended to you all, that council not expand the current SF four zone, and that it create a new ordinance disallowing short-term rentals in all other zones of the city. And you may remember, it was a very well-written fifty-two-page document, and it even included a draft ordinance from the city of Arlington, an ordinance which had already survived legal challenges. What was council's response to P and Z's time, their gift to the city, their hard work? Well, at the next week, at your March eighth meeting, on the apparently questionable advice of the city attorney and the ill-conceived motion of Councilmember Hahn's, council approved a step-by-step process to allow short-term rentals everywhere. Now, in organizational management, that kind of behavior is what's known as the window shade approach to management. That is, the committee gives you a report, you say, "I don't want to hear that," pull down the shade. You want to look at that data. You want to hear about that. It's a method used by Richard Nixon back in nineteen-seventy when his commission on obscenity and pornography made his report. He simply said, "I don't want to hear it. We're not going to do it. They've performed a disservice, and I totally reject the report." That group was not a standing committee, a permanent committee, but it was a policy task force, given a specific task. Well, I'm gonna tell you, if I had been a member of the Wood Creek Planning and Zoning Commission and heard your decision on March eighth, on March ninth, I would have resigned. Time for council to reconsider how it functions. Time for you to think about how you operate as a council, rather than spending time writing ordinances that can't be enforced anyway. We have no enforcement officer, no municipal court, no municipal judge. Let's figure out something else to do with our time instead of just creating problems for our citizens. That's a challenge from me to you, one of those old has-beens. I think it's time to take a look. I'd be willing to help. If you don't understand what I'm talking about, I can punch your resources. I can be a resource. But it's time to start doing governance properly and get things back in order. Thank you for your attention.
Next on the list, Monica Roscoe.
Hello, Monica Roscoe, head of one sixty-four Augusta Drive. Oh, right here? Okay, there? I just want to thank the city council for addressing traffic concerns. I especially want to thank Brent Foley for his work with the Sheriff's Department. Over the course of the year, the sheriffs were available to patrol Wood Creek thirty-seven four-hour shifts. In that small amount of time, fifty-three speed warnings were issued to cars speeding twenty-five, over twenty-five miles an hour up to thirty-four. Forty-eight speed citations were issued to cars going above thirty-five miles an hour, and fifty-nine cars were stopped for failure, to stop at stop signs. Wood Creek does have traffic issues. Thirty-seven four-hour shifts equals a hundred and forty-eight hours. That's a little over six days. It is unreasonable to expect twenty-four-hour sheriff patrol. So I support traffic calming devices. The report begins on April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and ends April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. The tracking of whether or not the drivers of the car stopped, were Wood Creek residents or not, didn't begin until April third of twenty-twenty-three. During these fourteen days that they were tracked, eight cars that were stopped were non-residents and four residents. Cut-through traffic is a concern. It affects property values. Studies have shown that with more and easier access to home, crime increases. Cut-through traffic is not only a safety hazard to the citizens, the pedestrians, young and old, on bicycles and golf carts and walkers, but it's also a hazard. It also contributes to increased noise, increased pollution, increased litter, which I have increasingly noticed beer cans thrown on the side of the road when I walk, and wear and tear on our roads. The drivers cutting through our roads do not pay taxes to replace and maintain our roads. We do. I support any effort that the council takes and the city takes to discourage cut-through traffic. And again, thank you for your time and your attention on this important issue. Thank you.
Last on the list, Carol Shield.
Yes, thank you. Well, it's been said that many people wonder if Bill and I live under the same roof because we did not communicate about who was saying what this evening. So my topic is short-term rentals, and I'll tell you why. As I understand it, and if I am wrong, correct me, that we, for you, had a survey, put out a survey, and overwhelmingly, the majority of those who were surveyed said, "No." But you overruled it. Why? Are we having short-term rentals, or are we not having short-term rentals? The rumor is that we are. And then I, my question to all of you is, who's going to gain money on this? Who is that, are the short-term rentals going to benefit? I can tell you from living in Wood Creek, and if you don't live in Wood Creek and you don't have neighbors, I don't have a short-term rental next to me right now. But I've had them up in Cypress Point, and I can tell you, they're some of the worst people I've ever met because they don't think they have to follow the rules. It's not their problem. I beg you, if you did pass short-term rentals, to reconsider this. Again, why? Would people tell you that they don't want them, and you would overrule it? That just, that's not comprehensible to me. And if it is what you did, and I do want to know what you did and why you did it, I want to know who's going to benefit from these short-term rentals. Thank you for your attention. I'm glad to hear what you said, Monica, about the traffic. Although I'm not down there and I stop at all stop signs, I'm sure there is a problem. I'm just glad I don't, I seem to miss it all the time. Thank you again.
Thank you. Other comments? First report from our officer and council liaison is on January third.
Planning and planning, and we had one item before them on their May third meeting, which is a draft ordinance regarding about ground pools. We had a thorough and thoughtful discussion on this topic, and a report should be coming to the council soon. Among the ideas discussed, there was an interesting element that I would like to bring to council's attentions that did not make it into a motion, and that was the idea of, when it came to trucking the water to fill a pool, we should stipulate that the water is coming from outside our office. P and Z has such a public hearing on the issue for their June seventh meeting.
Thank you.
Can we ask questions? Okay, so you're saying that you're gonna change, you're talking about changing the ordinance to the water comes outside of our office, not just our segments?
It was part of the discussion at the meeting, but it didn't make it into a motion. That's why I wanted to highlight it for you all. I thought it was a really good idea.
Oh, yeah, me too. I'd support that. So, probably, you know, get that accomplished on, like, the which question Dick's on what he said. How are we gonna certify that that water came from outside the office?
At that point, actually, they were speaking to anyone. It was part of the process. And what we sent to them, the water was chucked in.
Yeah, I remember that part, yeah.
So they were elaborating how.
Any other questions? All right, ordinance review committee?
So the ordinance review committee is currently working on fire prevention and the fireworks ordinances. They're, they moved into a second draft of those, which I believe staff is going to be drafting a copy for them based on the edits that they worked through in their meeting. They're going to be starting up animal control. And then after that, they have kind of an open agenda, so they are seeking input from us. So just keep that in mind, council, as far as any ordinances you would like to see or see take up. That would need to be an agenda item that we recommend, you know, make a motion on and send to them. Otherwise, they might request approval to look at something else. But yeah, after animal control, that's all we've given permission to at this point.
Quick question. If we do have an ordinance that we'd like you guys to look at, and we need to have an agenda item and have the council approve it, okay?
Anything else of ordinance review? All right, we've gone through parks and recreation. The parks and recreation at this time, they are collecting bids right now for various playthings, the playground equipment and elements that are needed for each one of the park locations. They have many of them already obtained, but they don't have all of them. They want to bring the whole, the complete package to the city council. It'll be a red alert. Platten Rose?
We have a bid package. Huge one, but part of that, that's half, that's the package. K. Breeze, this was through the nineteenth. They promised, but we did get it by the twenty-second. Thank you to Suzanne and the staff for putting together, each member of the panel, as one of these packages, we're going to go through pretty carefully. I was a little disappointed in that one of the very first pages where it lists all the streets, K. Breeze said, "We have thirty roads remaining to pave." We actually have thirty-two roads. Now, an engineer missed that, I wasn't sure, but they didn't include Canyon Creek Drive or Wilson Circle. But they did include those in some later panel. So they just, each of us are going to go through this carefully because sometimes they're careless for engineers. But I do feel they did a better job with the mapping. Zach goes and said, "It's unclear how much milling is going to be done." So the different panel members will go through it pretty carefully. Also, I think Suzanne caught the fact that it lists our speed limit in Wood Creek as thirty-five miles an hour. So they missed that one. Correct. So the panels will review the package, and then over this weekend, send all of our suggestions and corrections to the city manager, who will give it to K. Breeze, who will then hopefully have, he will put pressure on them to turn it around quickly because we're on a nice dovetailed procedure of getting the bond passed. And then if we approve this road package on the first of June, it will go to city council the fourteenth, the fifteenth, it will go out to bid. The fifteenth of July, we will receive all the final packets, city protocols, and then we'll approve, send to the city council. One thing K. Breeze did do, they included a schedule of the best months for not too much rain, and the months with less than twenty-five, a quarter of an inch rain would be September, October, November. So that's what we're shooting for. That'd be the best time for this building to be done. We have nine miles remaining. I believe that it may be really a stretch to do everything with asphalt overlay. And a provision in this contract is that if the budget is exceeded, there will be between one mile and three miles of roads that can be considered for chip seal. These are the lightly-traveled roads that hit probably under two-hundred trips a day. So Cody, the chairman of the road committee, says we'll be done by October the first. So let's hope this all works.
Dismissed.
So I just wanted to confirm, when you say nine miles, thirty-two roads, that's rolling back in those roads that we had hoped to do chip seal by now?
Yes.
So that's included in that bid? And so that one, the three miles over, is kind of that same plan we planned?
It really is. Okay. Yeah, roughly. Roughly, we had about a mile. So, and I didn't see maybe two miles. We also may not include the airfield. We may have other sources.
Yeah, that's currently granted, the block rating.
Just a quick question. I think I saw the work. If you have that, Suzanne?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot of work, man. I know. That's a lot of work.
Twenty-four pages of the package, and then a hundred and seventeen.
Is there an office copy?
That's mine. Mine is the untitled, always.
So there's a copy. Someone was coming by to look at it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, that's all I have. Thanks, Lenny.
Council can come look at it. I mean, it's the first, it's the first of many drafts. The first time that the road panel will see kind of a finished product will be at their June first meeting. We're giving them two weeks to go over it, to come up with those, hopefully with only minor details, you know, little things that we regret. And I will begin with K. Breeze and having them correct that before June first, before the roads committee. So when it goes upon with the roads committee, it should be a complete and accurate RFP where they won't have to make any more additions or recommendations on the RFP.
Correct.
Anything else on, on the roads? Mayor Chris Andrew Foley, three words?
Yes, I want to congratulate the committee for their work in cities, all the work to give us the True City USA designation. It's a big deal. We're really happy about it. Here are the things that we talked about or been talking about on that committee. We're looking at doing Arbor Day events. That's part of, you know, what we do as a True City USA. That is planned to be November fourth, from ten a.m. to two p.m. Of course, it's always subject to change. Looking at location, possibly at Canada Day, something like that. We plan to have a, not only just material about the city and about, you know, trees and what we're doing here, but we're hoping to have car flocking to come back out again and do a kind of a walking tour in that area to show us, you know, oak trees, this has oak well, this is what it looks like. This is a tree that doesn't have oak well. That's what it looks like to help folks identify and kind of help diagnose if they have oak well on their property. And then, you know, we'll be putting out more information in terms of, you know, what you can do about it because we do have a problem and we need to be proactive. So that's what we're looking at for Arbor Day. Earth Day, we reviewed after-action report on that. We think that went well. There was a lot of activity at the Triangle, Kevin made hot dogs when a lot of people come by, and the saplings and cookies and all kinds of stuff. It was also a good day. A lot of volunteer work was done at Justa Park. A lot of cleanup was done down there. This Cypress Point area of the dam, a lot of cleanup was done down there as well. A lot of people in the committee turned out in help, and that feels good to have you doing stuff like that together. So we want to do it again, and we want to help promote it. We want to work with cars people and help, you know, them together on that. And the question they had is the water fountain that Aqua gave us, I assume that's gonna get installed at some point, so.
It's on our to-do list.
Yeah, man. But we've got a fountain for people, and it's got a little place. Yeah, man, but we've got a a fountain for people and it's got a little place for dogs too, so if you walk into the Triangle, you can watch your whistle, so that's good. Uh, lastly, we're looking at a tree review process, uh just both damage remaining from the from the ice storm. And also, you know, how the oak well is progressing, we're looking at possibly July, you want to just have a quick review. Uh, to kind of get an overall picture of it. And then thereafter, once we have a uh, you know, a a contract arborist, you know, available, uh then you can do a more full inventory of, you know, right away in city owned areas to kind of see where we're at with oak well and with with the damage. Uh, so that's what we're working on and uh I I love this committee and they're they're doing great work, so thank you.
Question, Treework?
Just have one, as far as the arborists is concerned, we've talked about it quite some time, but nothing has come to fruition yet. What I what I understand is RFPs been put out and uh we're we're, you know, hoping to get responses, the problem is always going to be we're working our head off. Uh, you know, cleaning up trees, so uh it hasn't been a real uh receptive audience yet, but we expect that it does and we're monitoring. And looking for work again, yeah, right, that's right.
Uh, if I can expand on the arborists, you know, we did put out the RFP, uh we put an ad in Wimberley View and we have sent emails to tree vendors that have worked in the city here recently to try to get interest, but as of today, we have not received any uh applications. And the deadline was at the end of this month, so we are extending it for another month. Hopefully uh we will get some responses, but uh, yeah, everyone, all the tree vendors are, we're making um good money. Uh, and so uh, you know, we haven't received any bids, but we are actively trying to contact them and let them know that the RFP is up there for them.
That's for border mountains, if you guys know somebody, you know, a child, you know, you know, help us. You don't have questions?
Damon, your report?
Okay, I just have a couple of things, I want to first welcome Kathy, she is our new office reports specialist. She started Monday, um she is taking um orange ice, um she's out at the front, we've been welcoming everybody here. Um, she came from the Wimberley View, where she has been there forever. Um, so get get a chance, come by and say hello, um, but we're really glad that she's here and and we'll start putting her to work and she's already been working very hard since since she came on, but welcome, welcome her and we're glad that she came on board. The SPR permit, um, we, me and Roger Gordon were um charged with coming up with a framework for a permit that will be on the workshop on May thirtieth. Um, another thing, social media accounts, um, council wanted us to have a Facebook and Nextdoor account to post information on the city. Uh, we have established the Facebook page, it's City of Wood Creek at Facebook or whatever, and and some things, I have posted some things on there, like meetings and such. But that will be one of Kathy's um uh projects, that everything that goes out in the email box or on our website for uh information purposes will also be included on Nextdoor and Facebook. So I'll be looking for that. Um, we will have the pending business uh sheet to go over about what has been done, what's still out there, the progress that's been made, that will be at the workshop May, May thirtieth as well. Um, also too, on the May, on the May thirtieth workshop, we will have a, we will begin budget, sorry, budget season. Um, what I like to talk about in the in the budget workshop is just some of your priorities for this upcoming budget. Whether, you know, uh, and try to get a a council consensus on, okay, we want to have some money in there for parks or some. We want to have uh give staff a fifty percent raise or something right like that, um, you know, we'd be. No, but just kind of get your priorities, whether it's parks or roads or um mobility or or whatever it may be, I'm not, you know. And so that way, when I start crafting the budget, uh if there is uh extra funds where we might be able to do some light on those for those projects in the capital, we can put in there. Unappropriately. Um, also in front of you, you should have a sheet of paper with motions on there. Uh, this is for the presentation later for the uh the bond issuance. If somebody would like to make a a motion on the uh agenda items three and four, it has language that we would like you to use, just so it's all legal nice and and that comes from my lawyer, not us, so if you blame him on that. Uh, also lastly, uh, the CBD grant has been submitted, um, everything was turned in, uh, we got all the paperwork to them, we got the same registration to them. Uh, the only if, the only downside to that is that uh we won't hear back from them until November or December. So I was hoping for a little sooner um response so we could know, we could have, if not, put them into the bond package um to do those roads. But we will probably be done with the roads by the time that we learn about the CBD grant. So uh, you know, that might be one of those areas that we want, might want to put some money towards for that. Um, because I also know that down there, there's also some ready dishes too along with some other places, so stuff like that is what I'm looking for. But uh, it has gone in and it already, you know, it's kind of hurry up and wait, red crescent. Get it all done and then you gotta wait for. Um, that's all I have.
Thank you, City Secretary. Your report? You will go to the report of the special head office group on one fifty-four, one fifty-seven?
Yes, so the group wrapped up their last meeting about two, I guess, two weeks ago. Um, so those chapters are now in final review. Um, and they are almost ready to be shared. We hope to get one package out a little sooner and the timing just kind of worked because that was a grueling every week schedule, but it looks like we'll actually have pretty much all of it ready to go. Um, they collectively decided they'd like to wait to work on the re-codification and restructuring until after they see how this work is received and how it through the bodies, um, and I'm I'm sorry, I know you weren't there, so this is also new to you. Um, so they are, they're looking at maybe reconvening at the end of summer, also, this Duncan has uh left for a little while on her travel, her annual summer pilgrimage. Um, so that was another kind of, it was a good time to just take a breath and refocus for a little bit. Um, they did speak that they would like council to reform the committee if the re-codification restructuring is taken up. They're asking for us to pull members from P and Z and then um possibly other advisory bodies if we solve it. But specifically, they wanted us to get some uh more committee members specifically from P and Z so that we were more of a collective body than we are right now. Because right now we have two from uh ORC and then two from council, but they would like to have also maybe one or two from P and Z. So that is an update on that. I did have a question for staff, because I don't know the deadlines for P and Z. When is P and Z's deadline for their June meeting?
Their agenda deadline?
Yeah.
Two firsts.
Two firsts, yeah.
Actually, it would be by Friday. This Friday? Okay, so we might not make.
Wait, post an agenda or to submit to?
No, to submit.
Materials for their agenda, um, we might not make that deadline, that would be a hard push, but um, yeah, so if not the June meeting. I might see if they wanted to call, or y'all might ask if they want to call a special meeting, our our workshop to start reviewing that stuff, but it'll be coming to them. Definitely, so they can get down there and go, I'm meeting at the latest. So that's that.
All right, thank you.
Did I, I think I made, you said for Platinum Road or for?
Finding, okay, I'm sorry, it would be uh June second, yeah, okay, so that's a little bit of a deal, I'm sorry. Um, so we'll see, we'll push and see what we can do, if we can make that rule, but uh it's also my son's birthday, two firsts, two parties, the second. Please don't shop at my house.
Oh, I thought that was a new place. All right. Special orders, approval of financial statement?
Oh, before you, you have the uh financial statements through March. Along with the uh check register for the month of March, June, or fourth, for the first quarter of the year.
Um, I move that we approve them, but for discussion purposes?
Good second.
Move by customer lines, seconded by customer drummer. To uh to uh financial statement and open for discussion.
All right.
Yes, please.
Um, there's an interesting chart in here I hadn't seen before, it's on uh page twenty-five, it says uh the March collection. Do you want that?
So fast.
Yeah, that is, that was, yeah, that was requested by uh Monica, the the Monica, thank you.
Library board, you talked about for a long time.
Right, and um, and so that will be a uh standard report that we will do. Now, you have to remember that sales tax is two months behind, though the um one that we received in March was actually for goods sold in January. So um, but if you're kind of, you you think we're doing about six, seven thousand a a month, um, that eleven thousand, that was probably a a one-time purchase or either uh it looks like it kind of spiked last year too, but in the, just looking at the numbers in April, we also had a a big uh bump, okay, I want to say it was twelve thousand, but of course, it's not included in here, it's on those two. March, so.
That February one, then you're getting December sales tax, your Christmas tax, yeah.
Correct.
Uh, cool, well, thank you, I like that chart, um.
And I'll, eventually we'll have a.
Oh, maybe a label?
Label, yes, yes.
Sorry.
Label, yes, this will, yes, I will include a a label and a and a little graph by the years to kind of see the the correlation.
So I had a couple more questions before I I yield to someone else. I noticed that the um, the two twenty-seven that we had set aside for the chip seal project is kind of gone from the budget and I realized that's because now we're reconsidering things. That is on page, excuse me, I, it's on, it was on page. Sorry. Uh, it's going to be page six. On page six, we have that two twenty-seven um kind of earmarked there.
It still is earmarked, it is transferred to capital. Um, the two hundred and ninety-four thousand, if you remember, we have two hundred, if you, and then if you go to page uh
Okay, see, okay.
Page twenty-one. Um, we did, we we have two hundred and twenty-seven thousand in cash that goes for the um chip shield project, which will actually be rerolling into the road geobot capital project. Uh, once we get the money for that. And then the other um sixty-seven thousand, that was the cash that makes up the creek side or the or the parks with the grant. That was our matching portion, so that is the portion that we had went over to the capital fund and is coming out of a fund balance.
All right, cool, I see now, thank you. Um, and so for that project for the, with the in, with the bond. When we, I I realize this is a bid now, but um, are we planning to use bond funds for that now or so when we go into budget?
We're using both, it's it's partially bond funded and partially cash funded, and we would, and we will use the bonds funds first and then the cash second.
Okay, um, and I saw where the ice peanut funds were accounted for on page eleven. Um, how is that? So are we just kind of moving that straight out of the general funds?
Not not necessarily, because right now you have a surplus in the general funds, you don't have to take any out of fund balance. Now, if it comes at the end of the year and our expenses are almost equal to our revenues, we will have to do a budget adjustment to account for that hundred and eighty-seven thousand. But right now, we're up by two hundred, let's just say a hundred and fifty thousand. Even with that in there, and so we don't need to do a budget amendment for that taking money out of uh reserve funds.
And so do we have any idea when we'll hear back from the FEMA? Like.
Long time.
Yeah.
Um, I got an email this afternoon that I have to go to Austin next in July, end of July, they're having a training show, huh? No, something, it's it's for hurricane flood debris, it's a major, it's like a big FEMA presentation, but they're going to talk about the the um debris cleanup and all of that. And so uh, yeah, we don't have a timeframe yet, we did register with um FEMA federal government for um putting our name into the hat to receive funds. And that was a deadline of Monday, so they know that that we want funds, they have contacted with me that they have received our request. When that all will happen and when they will start requesting receipts and documentation. FEMA here locally, our representative, Taylor, uh I've talked to her a couple of times and it's kind of a wait to see because they have, they'll have some.
Yeah, I went to that meeting in in San Marcos with, you know, FEMA and and TDM. And they were saying, yeah, it can take a while, you know, a couple of years, but then the summer will go in six months, so it's like, okay, all right. So we'll, we'll know when we know, but uh, but.
I guess residents have been asking me about it and so I just, I don't get the same emails as y'all, so I didn't really know what to tell them. So it sounds like anywhere from like end of the year to two to three years.
I would, I would tend towards two years. Longer than that.
I do have a question that I can ask, but in the discussions with the DDM or FEMA, have they explained what what is any process they're going to have for homeowners and total damage?
No. They're, they're really, like, if you, if you filled out the the ice staff form and and put it on record, but at this point, I mean, we didn't have the threshold for individual then.
Because what I read of the declaration is we judge funding for public entities and cities as well as for individual homeowners. And the definition of the FEMA eligibility process is that it's not income based. So somebody who is not like other pro, other social programs where you have an income.
Right, you don't have to have.
You do have to show that you were uninsured or that you insured in that cover, but I'm just wondering.
Yeah, they have.
They should have activated the energy centers by now, I think.
They haven't activated any, no, they.
Not very good.
Yeah.
Well, that recent last speech, I do have a neighbor that's structural damage and he doesn't have a.
Yeah, when we, if I hear about it, I'll I'll let you know, probably put something out on email blast, because I know there was, so goodness, we didn't have a lot of damage.
That's independent of the city, the cities, I think the cities can help with the certification, but.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind putting that out there, just hey, this is a a resource, because I think that's something that you can do with, you know, we help the cities and stuff, but um, yeah.
You know how to.
Yeah, we'll test on everything we know. Um, any other questions on the financial plan? That's on the drummer.
Um, on page six, under revenues and under expenses, could you elaborate on what other things?
Yeah, if you go to page eight. This is our revenue, this is the the last of the revenue. So our other revenue would be interest income miscellaneous municipal court revenue, uh, TDM. Which is a grant, I guess, and donation. That would be your other income, so that that comes up to the uh forty thousand seventy-two. Is that what you're talking about, or are you talking about expenses? Because there's also expense, okay, then you can go to uh eleven, that has the breakout of the other. And so that's contingency reserves, the ice storm, the comprehensive plan, uh bond issuance and street project. Would would encompass other for for expenses.
Great, thank you, um. On page nineteen, we have a public education in there with the success funds.
Yes.
With an ending balance of about twenty-five, almost twenty-six thousand dollars. Could you elaborate on where these funds come from and if we have a local cable company that has a V E V now?
Uh, no, we don't, and that is not nearly enough to run a a channel. Um, it is restricted funds, you can only use it for television channel and it comes from the cable companies.
Correct, that's what I was asking, does our local, does the cable? Correct, that's what I was asking, does our local, does the cable company have a PEG channel?
All, I don't know, but even if they did, we wouldn't have the money to um. Book one on, you have to buy the cameras, you have to have the crew, you have to have electronics.
Oh, so they just offer the space.
Well, they offer, yes, with the with the PEG, all they have to, they have to give cities um a channel. That's all they give. And and the city provides everything else, and right now you can only use it for television, you can't use it for internet, you can't use it for the the broadcasting that we do now. You can't do that. Hopefully, one day that they'll get up to the twenty-first century and realize that, hey, this would be good, since they do the broadband anyway. But. It's gonna stay there and we're gonna get some interest on it. Um, but until something changes in the legislation, um we won't be able to use it, just because of those expensive stations.
Any other questions on the financials? Uh, there is a question on the fourth of first financial segment. Seconded?
Seconded.
No, we seconded by customer number overall.
Mayor for ten, Brent Lloyd.
Aye.
Councilmember, Lenny Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember, Chris Rimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember, Bob Henry.
Aye.
Councilmember, Deborah.
Aye.
Aye.
First unanimous. That is okay, new visit, the first um on the agenda, presentation discussion on planet finance. Um, vice people, um with our guests Brad Ains and Stephen Bell and uh Kevin Moa from OREC to answer any questions as well, so.
Right, yeah, this is, this is, uh, we have a couple things that we need to uh go over first, because the plan of finance, kind of how we're going to. Structure the debt and how to go forward and to give um staff and the mayor to go forward, a bond council and. Uh, the FA, um, we think go forward with the um bond sale, with getting the requirements and documents put in place for that. And then also, we will be talking about the repleasants of the last bond payment that we have, which is the two hundred and thirty thousand that will normally be. What, thirty-three? Two hundred and thirty-three, two hundred and thirty-three thousand that will um would normally be paid off in February, but we've also talked about. Paying that earl, off early to keep those expenses, so those are the kind of two uh items that we need motion by, but first. Uh, I want Brad kind of go over the the plan of finance, uh feel free to ask him any questions. Uh, we got the bond council here for all the legal stuff, so we shouldn't go away without any uh. Questions in your mind, Dave, we brought them in here and they were nice enough to to come here and answering your questions. So this is your, this is your team that will um sell our bonds for three point five minutes, these are the, these are the guidance.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, sir, mayor, council, um staff, good to be with you, Brad Ains, Steve Spiegel, we serve as the city's financial advisor, and my colleague Stephen Bell with me. Uh, and it's been introduced, your bond counsel, Justin Rosex with uh OREC. Um, we're here with a few items, it is um. Time to have some official action from the council, uh to give us our uh marching orders to move forward as we prepare and structure this bond. Um, there are some uh additional meetings, where you'll have some information in prime view and some additional. Uh, decisions being made as we come up to your June meeting, uh in July meetings, so this is, this is not your last opportunity to. Um, review of the structure and uh provide your feedback, but uh but it is an important step, it's when we want to have some clarity. Uh, as far as the structure, the timeline, uh that we're gonna go out with um moving forward. So we have prepared a a presentation, uh we went through a lot of this with you in detail at the May meeting. Um, so a lot of this, this data on the front end, I'm not going to um go into detail again this time. Um, but just a a reminder, if you're right now or on the uh first slide, tax-based overview, this is a look at your historical. Uh, values within the ceiling limits, force your values, taxable excess valuation, uh is what's used to calculate. Um, uh and work off the uh tax rate, which brings in the revenue to repay your bonds. Yes, sir.
A question on underpopulation, does it change anything? When we use a. More recent population, does it change any of the figures for you?
It, it won't, we pulled, uh, you know, it has that twenty-twenty census data, we did um look at the. Uh, some of the state website, another website, and we did decide to stick with that uh official data from the U.S. Census Bureau. Um, but no, it's not gonna affect um any of your your metrics at all. Uh, but we would like to have, if y'all have uh more accurate information, we would uh definitely like to have, we can hand that from staff if you have new numbers.
Where we're metropolitan, handling the population, it would have a factor, but you know, we. It is, I mean, it stays pretty consistent and it's still, I think it's right around eighteen is the latest figure that I saw, so, yeah, it it will.
Thanks for interrupting me, I'm impressed. I'm guessing you don't have our latest uh tax data from, or data from the county's authority, because we've all received the letter. So is there a letter that y'all can get to adjust this at all?
We did, we do have your preliminary says valuation for the coming uh budget year.
Did I miss it? Is it?
It is, it is included, yes, ma'am, it'll be in the uh analysis, starting on page nine, I believe. And so, so here on this page, page three, um you're looking at fiscal year twenty-three, so that's the, that's the fiscal year we're in currently. And you're you, you're using that taxable test valuation from last um last tax year. Uh, so moving forward, we do have the preliminary, uh which is included, oh.
I hate to break it to you, but our packet numbers are right over your page numbers.
Okay.
So every time you say a page number, it means nothing to us, try to reference like something in the box maybe?
I do have it, it's uh, it's gonna be in about six pages on the planet finance. We have a preliminary number of three hundred and thirty-seven million that we're using. I'll, I'll point that out again here in just a couple minutes.
Alright.
It's alright. Um, so again, uh, and then there in the middle on the tax rate history, that the last INS rate that you have, the INS is the, is the debt service rate again. The six point eight seven cents, and that's what we're. Keenly focused on uh and structuring to, and of course, um very mindful of maintaining two cents within that. On the next slide, page four, um again, this is just a quick recap of your tax base, uh the top taxpayers. Uh, and then also uh some of the average household incomes, these are all information that we use as we go to talk to the. Uh, credit rating agency to get a rating on your bonds. Um, onto page five, is a look at your current debt portfolio. Again, you only have one uh debt obligation outstanding currently that was issued in twenty seventeen. Uh, as Mr. Rule alluded to, you're, you're in your last payment cycle. Um, that payment is in next fiscal year, in next February, so as of today, that stays, uh if that remains, it's going to use. Um, that INS rate to be able to repay it, and so uh we do have some numbers, we do have a um a look at uh prepaying that. So that it can free up that INS rate in order to pay for your, for your road bonds. Okay, moving on, page six, we covered this last time, this is some of the rating agency. Uh, metrics and methodologies that we're looking at, uh pertinent to this discussion, financial performance includes. Um, one of the key metrics the rating agencies look at in this fund balance. Uh, your, your unassigned fund balance as a percentage of your budget, uh we've evaluated that, we feel like you have a very healthy position. Um, I'll go into more detail uh with that in a moment, um as we get into the plan of finance. Okay, I'm on page eight, this is a summary, this is, this is uh the structure that uh we're planning to go out with, that we're recommending. Uh, it includes the feedback that this uh uh everybody gave us at the last meeting and instructed us to. Um, uh move forward with and to refine uh as far as the plan, so we go through this one here in a little more detail, so of course you have. Your voter authorized debt authorization, voters approved at this last election, three point four nine five million dollars. Um, that will be the amount that we're looking to produce with bond sale, pay for your projects. Uh, the purpose and use of these bond proceeds will be fund street and road improvements. Um, I'm glad to hear that you want to make good progress on getting your bids in, uh we will, we will do our uh job and get you the money. So, uh, so the plan of finance, first off, it's important that we've uh highlighted and bolded here, keep the INS rate. Uh, and within two cents of your current INS rate, so cabinet that, and that's what y'all conveyed to your voters. Um, we uh will not move forward with the structure that that goes above that. Uh, second option and and portion uh of the plan here, we are recommending a movie, uh. Thank you, move forward with a public offering of bonds uh on a negotiated basis and what that means. Um, so this is, so you have a few different options when you issue debt obligations, you can go directly to. Uh, banks and lenders and do a direct purchase or placement with them. Uh, you can work with governmental lenders, uh, development board, the USDA. Um, and then, uh lastly, which is usually the most efficient, is going to the capital market and. Selling your bonds to institutional investors across the country, wherever they may be. Um, we checked in with uh our underwriting desk to uh is is in the market on a daily basis, we talked to them today just to confirm. Uh, this is still our recommended route, there's not a whole lot of activity and offers coming from. Uh, the commercial bank community right now, um that's due to the the interest rate rise. Um, and them needing to put their money elsewhere and also hold on to some of their liquidity. Um, as it's uh a little bit of the bank scares that that happened with Silicon Valley Bank and the others. Um, lastly, banks typically like to lend in the seven to twelve-year range, if you're looking at twenty to twenty-five. Um, this is not in their wheelhouse, so a public offering of bonds on a negotiated basis. Um, this will be repaid through your ad valorem property taxes. If your voters approve, uh that is what is called a general obligation bond, EDO bond. Um, we are recommending that you obtain a bond rating, a credit rating, uh through Moody's. Uh, and that you also keep available the opportunity for bond insurance. Um, so you could sell your bonds non-rated. Um, there's a cost that comes with getting a ratings from Moody's, um but getting that rating. Actually lowers, it lowers your interest rate, like we'll get from uh the market, and so it is. Uh, better financially if you pay for a rating or to lower your interest rate. Same thing with bond insurance, bond insurance, um you pay for it upfront, um and essentially it's. Pay a fee at when you sell the bonds, if you were ever to have um a situation where you couldn't make the payment, that bond insurer stepped up and make the payment. Um, that's, that's the mechanics of the way it works, the benefit though comes because. That bond insurance company has their own credit rating. So the size of Wood Creek, you're probably gonna get about an A, get an A plus, a credit rating. Um, the bond insurance companies have a double A rating, so if you pay for the bond insurance and go to the market. Um, you'll again be able to lower your interest rate cost, um so much so that it pays for the cost of that rating. And provide some more, yes, ma'am.
Um, can you tell me roughly what that cost is?
It's a, it's a, um, it's actually a percentage of the debt service that you pay, and so I believe it is. Point five percent, fifty basis points, point five rated, five if they got it, okay, uh so a quarter of one percent.
And that's what the insurance and the rating is what?
The rating is a, it's about fifteen thousand dollars flat fee. And they have a sliding scale, if you issue a larger amount of bonds, I think the the. Well, if you go over five million in bonds, then they increase their cost.
It turns out how many basis points? It turns out how many?
Twenty-five basis of your total debt service.
So I know that you didn't prepare the initial bond documents, but was this in, or you did that, but was this in that cost that y'all had? Sort of attached in all of those estimates? You had that, that possible cost?
Your cost of issuance of your bonds, were these included? Uh, I'm not sure if they were.
Okay.
They would definitely be paid with bond.
So they're paid, even the, the bond rating isn't paid with bond fund after the fact?
Yeah, doesn't fit your budget.
Nothing, nothing comes out of our pocket, all of the expenses, the uh, the FA, the. The underwriting, the paying agent, um all of the filings, uh any expenses with issuing the bond. Um, they'll subtract that out before um we receive the funds and the paying, paying agents, the one that pays all of them, so we don't even have to send the money to them. We get all their bills before they give us the money and we give it to the paying agent, and paying agent gets the money, they pay everybody and then they give us the payment.
So we just get, we get the bond rating now as sort of like a promissory, promissory type thing?
No, the bond rating, uh, they'll, they'll look at our financials, they'll see how much we have in, uh, how much we get in revenue. Uh, how our AV has been over the years, they usually look at a five or ten-year.
I meant, I meant the fee, it's a fifteen thousand dollar flat fee.
Correct.
We need that now, but you're saying everything gets paid. At the bond later.
Correct, they will, yes, they'll wait four months to get their money, yes.
All, yeah, all these costs and vendors and professionals get paid in closing. And out of the bond proceeds.
You can pay it out of pocket if you want, but I don't, nobody normally, I don't think anybody does.
That's, no, that's one of the benefits of public finance, and that's something that IRS allows um to be paid from the tax and the proxy. Uh, so that it um, uh it does maintain your operational budget and certain, you know, and reserves so that you can. Um, use that money eventually, so um always try and keep that on to the. Cost of issuance within a bond deal, to just pay down those proceeds. Um. We are recommending that you uh have a twenty-five-year max final maturity. Um, and we may structure it as as low as twenty as we've been talking with you about, but we. Um, have that as a maximum, so um I believe the the same text of law should go out further than twenty-five years on general obligation bonds. Um, we think twenty-five years is sufficient to keep you within uh that two cent maximum increase on the INS, so. That's.
If that's why you would go with twenty-five versus twenty?
Yeah, you. It's um.
And we just been throwing around twenty and I keep thinking twenty-year road, twenty-year bond. We explained it last time, if we go to twenty-five, that means in a couple more years, we have a greater chance of being able to borrow more money for some other kind of project. So by extending it out, it, it gives you more debt borrowing possibility sooner, if that's something we're interested in.
One, one thing that that in this illustration is that we did not increase the uh. The AV value, the PAV value, the 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 property tax value, we, we said that. Um, no, their houses are not gonna get any more expensive. And so, and and so, you know, we kind of took the most conservative approach, so uh, you know, we assume that there's, there's no increased valuation in the. Ad valorem um that we get, and also uh, so as we go along, the twenty-five years allows us to have those little bumps, so five-year. Uh, with that reduction of principal, um and maybe some AV growth, you know, we need to do a drainage project or something. And we, and we have to go to PWDB or freshwater development board and get some of their uh. Some of their funding, because that's a private placement, that you go through the same processes, but it's different. Um. We would be able to, we'd have that, that flexibility. So we can go with.
Different document. Different document, I. Roll into this.
No, 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 if you, if, if, if a couple of years we, we decided to do something else, it would be a wholly different document. And, but it would be similar process, but it would be a different guy.
The idea is that our, we would have generated, it's almost like equity. Meaning that our, we could bump our tax rate back up to where it was. And then we have that borrowing essential right there, if we did twenty-five years.
Or, or if the future council, so it's in twenty twenty-nine is what we've already structured for that step down uh in debt service payment. If the council at that time says, no, we don't, we don't have needs, um, or we don't want to uh do any more projects or debt financing, then it would, your, your tax rate would go down.
And that could also pay for, there's been a lot of discussion on creating a maintenance plan for these roads. So that kind of, and, and all the research I'm thinking, you can, you can actually extend the life of the road and maybe you can. So that little step gallon gives that room to, we could just keep it all focused on the roads, that's what. It might be, that's what they said in the.
This would give you that flexibility and that's the third goal within these structures. Um, always to give you all that future flexibility, the community, that future flexibility. Um, so that you can avoid a tax rate increase in the future. And then, let's see, last bullet point here, uh, which we'll have some more discussion, I have some particular numbers, but uh making an early final payment and paying off that twenty-seven, uh, twenty seventeen note uh here this summer. Um, so I talked about the timeline a little bit already. We will, um, at the June meeting, bring in front of you what's called the preliminary official statement. Um, that's the offering document that will go out to investors. Um, so that June, by that June meeting, we will have that completed, chance for you all to review. Um, and put your approval on all of the terms and conditions and structure and financial information that you're putting forth to investors, you're saying, uh, this is accurate and true about our community and we'd like you to invest in it. That will go on in June, at the July meeting. Uh, um, Justin can talk about this more, but the state, but here, uh, within the state of Texas, statute requires that this council be the ones to approve a bond purchase agreement uh for a city of your size. So we would have the bond sale the morning of that July twelfth meeting. We would bring you the results. We would bring you a bid uh to underwrite from the underwriter, uh, essentially a proposal to buy your bonds at a certain price. Um, on that evening of the July, July twelfth. And then there's a uh three to four week closing process, uh, where all the information is sent to the attorney general to offer uh review for um compliance and um, then we have to make early August, August or you would be able to have funding for it. All right, let's flip the page, uh, this page nine, a little more of the analysis here. Um, I'm not going to dive in too deep, but there were a couple of questions that you all asked uh last time. Um, so this is uh the table here, mid-page that shows the increase in the taxable debt valuation. So there on the left-hand side, highlighted in yellow, uh, shows the preliminary certified value. Um, with a tad of a, tad bit of a discount in there. Um, you, the appraisal district doesn't think it's going to come in higher than that. So by including this lower number, that is a bit more conservative. Um, again, we'll have a chance all the way up till July twelfth, um, to fine tune what those debt service payments are going to be. So that we can hit and maintain that maximum two cent increase. Um, as Mr. Rule alluded to, the next uh column, we did keep a zero percent growth rate. Um, on the future values of the property within the city. Uh, and so that, that does a couple of things, that, that means, um, you know, there is no future growth, it's conservative. But if there is no future growth, we know again, we um structure our bonds, be paid at that same tax rate. You're going to be able to keep that tax rate at that two cents or lower. Um, if you do have growth, which we fully expect, it's going to create um a downward pressure on your tax rate. Um, so it's going to reduce your tax rate. If we keep it at two cents today, and you grow next year any bit above zero percent, it's actually going to reduce that INS tax rate. Um, so I highlighted again in orange, just the, the section uh where we prove up, we're keeping, keeping it at two cent maximum increase. Based on that, and then uh we've also shown in the very right-hand column that projected INS uh rate with the um, the T A V. Uh, on the bottom half of the page, again, just to recap, reiterate, uh, this current structure is stepping down every five to six years. Um, that could provide you the future uh task fee for projects, or it gives you an opportunity to lower the, the INS or tax rate again. Any questions on that, that page in the scenario? So I did, I did skip over a couple of bullet points up top. We calculated what, what does two cents mean to your average homeowner or what the home value? So the average home value uh that we found, this is market price, about four hundred and twenty-five thousand right now within the city of Wood Creek. Um, if you take two pennies, a two cent increase and you apply it against a five hundred thousand dollar home, it's about a hundred dollars a year. Uh, so the average home would be a little bit less than that hundred dollars. Page ten is just additional detail to um, to the summary that was provided on the previous page. I'm going to, I'm going to jump to uh page eleven. This is where we talk about uh the payoff of your uh twenty seventeen note. Um, the payoff, we are um looking, you have to give them notice and give them a chance to prepare for receiving those funds and not have that money invested more. Uh, we're estimating that it could be completed by June twenty-eighth with a uh, with a action and approval this evening. Um, on that date, the payoff is approximately two hundred and thirty-four thousand uh at that date. Um, there's a little bit of savings associated with paying it off early. Um, it's, it's, it's pretty immaterial though here. Twenty-three hundred bucks, about one percent of the outstanding amount. And that's because you're paying on, you, you don't have to pay that interest through that way. Um, so we wanted to take a look in value, do you have the cash to be able to pay for this? Do you have substantial amount? Um, don't want you getting too thin on your, your balances. Uh, and so based on uh your last financial audit that went out, it's about a year old, but that amount was one point three six four, one point three six four million dollars of an unassigned general fund balance. Um, I understand you've had some uh events, the ice storms, the payments go out. Uh, but currently that amount is equal to um two hundred percent or a hundred and ninety-seven point three percent your annual uh revenues that you've got, that you've come up with. So your budgeted revenues for this year were six ninety-one. That amount, that fund balance is a hundred and ninety-seven percent compared to that. So that's that metric I pointed out that the rating any people might look at, that's one of the biggest factors, the heaviest weighted items they look at. And what they say, um, to Moody's and S and P and Bitch, they all want to see you have at least a twenty-five percent fund balance compared to your buddy. Now, when you get to be a smaller city, it's better to have a little more because um big ice storm event, costly event. Uh, nominally, nominally is still a high dollar amount. So um, I like to see and I recommend fifty percent if you're able to get a good amount. Um, Moody's does, you know, for their triple A identities, triple A cities that are smaller than ten thousand, that's the the average for a triple A is fifty-four point two percent of that fund balance. So I looked at that, so fifty-four point two percent of your budget, the six hundred and ninety-one, equates to a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar fund balance. Now, I'm, I'm by no means suggesting that you spend your cash down to that level. Think this is one of your, your best strengths, that's a very big strength, and I think you can afford to um do the two hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Well, you were saying that, that like Moody or whoever, if we look at a smaller city, a triple A smaller city, you know, at a much lower bond volume, you know, with our kind of, you said that we could probably come in and maybe an A or an A plus. Um, why, just because we haven't been rated in the past?
No, so there's a lot of different factors, I, I laid them out in the previous slide. Um, a lot of them uh are out of your control. And that's the demographics of your community. Um, you are a small community, you only have seventeen, eighteen hundred residents. Um, because you have a limited uh pool of taxpayers compared to some others. Um, you have a more um concentrated taxpayer base. And so if one big payer leaves, um, or if you have something happen, you're more, you're a little bit more risky to an investor, but not as many. Um, they also look at, um, you know, median incomes, median home values compared national norms. Y'all are in good shape there with home values, you have a good uh tax base in that regard. Um, they look at the age of your population, you know, is there fixed income type situations with some of your taxpayers? Um, homestead exemption, they look at a broad variety of your demographics. Um, things in your control or your financial management, y'all are in very good shape there. Um, but the weighting on it doesn't get you up to that, that double A or triple A. Yes, sir. Let me, yeah, let's, let's have a.
I just want to talk back to the concept of paying off our existing debt. Because way back when I brought this idea to council and we've kind of talked about that, how at that time, the advice was you don't get a huge benefit from it and you risk spending a big old chunk of capital and not having that. Then we had an ice storm, I know that we've got more money in an interest-bearing account now, so that's good. We're generating more income from the funds we have. My, I just want to be like point blank, do you believe paying off the existing debt is the best method to go? I see it in your paperwork, so.
Yeah, I, after listening to the council, I'm a staff, but priorities, um, I do believe it is and I'll tell you why. Um, so if you don't pay this off early and you layer on your new bond today, um, as a zero payment, you're going to bump up to about a sixteen cent tax rate next year. It would go back down to that eight cent, two cent level, but you're going to have one year where you go up ten cents. Um, so that's, that's the most extreme case. Now, we talked a little bit, well, what if you pay off a portion of it? Um, that is an option. Um, we showed you a scenario the last time, uh, where you pay off about half of it and you can keep your uh tax rate at about a nine point five level. That's still um would play to about a two point six cent increase compared to where you are. And so uh because of the commitment y'all made to your voters of two cents, um, from, from what I heard at the last meeting was you need to stay at the two cents. Um, the, the, the last option is you, you wait, don't issue bonds now. You wait till next year, you pay off that debt next year and you wait till next summer. Um, what I've found and what I want to make sure to convey was that from all of my cities and school districts that I work with, um, inflation right now and construction inflation, um, is far outpacing uh the cost of, of, uh, you know, interest cost and of, of capital. And uh we've been seeing instances where, you know, depending on the type of material or type of project, we're seeing fifteen, twenty, um, even twenty-five percent increases in project cost. Um, so I just want to make sure and warn out, if you do decide, if you wanted to wait until next year to do this, maybe a road project, um, it may get smaller.
Yeah, I don't think those options, but the option that, uh, that was given to us that wouldn't result in that sixteen cent increase was the idea of, of rolling the debt actually into the bond, meaning like part of the bond money is used to pay it, so we could keep the capital and we just kind of push that debt out over that number span. And we, the math was presented to us of, it would only be a fractional increase for residents. And we would, if we didn't do that, we would only save this really small amount by paying it off now, which you kind of also highlighted as like two grand. Um, and then that, like the long-term impact wasn't that high on us. Meaning if we rolled it into the bond and paid it over long-term, we would only be paying like under five grand more. Or, you know, so we looked at it and we were like, wow, there's not a whole lot of incentive to lose that capital right now. And then you came on board and you're like, there's all the incentive in the world to do that. Or you're like, that's the smartest thing to do and I'm listening to you. And I just, I'm concerned because, you know, we're going to, we've just spent a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars on ice enough. Uh, we don't know when we're going to get that back. We might spend two hundred and twenty-five thousand on paying off our existing debt. There's that, and then we're also very clearly acknowledging that even with the whole bond package, that three point almost five million dollars, we might still have roads that we need to pay for, which would be another two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So right there, that's, that's kind of a lot of money we're talking about, just going out of that general fund and disappearing beyond, you know, today. And so that, that's where I just keep kind of getting hung up on, um, you know, just the, the idea of this, is it smarter? Have a little bit more debt for a longer period of time, so we've got more cash in our pocket? Or do we go ahead and just wipe out that old debt, lose the cash in our pocket, kind of take that gamble?
If, if I may, um, the only money that would be coming out of fund balance, and, and it may not, if our, if our revenues stay above our expenses, um, it won't, it won't be as much, but right now it's only the um, um, two hundred and thirty-three, what you said?
Two thirty-four.
Two, two thirty-four, would, let's say that our revenues equal to our expenses. Um, right now, we would only take out two hundred and thirty-four out of the one point four million, three million that we have in, in reserve. So we would still be at one point one million, which is still under fifty.
Nearly twice your.
Nearly, nearly twice.
I'm not worried about the credit rating, I, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about then, okay, we pay that debt off, then be like, oh, we're short that, those three miles, which we knew we might be, that's why we were trying to do a chip deal. So we've got to come up with another two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, suddenly we're over.
The two twenty-seven is coming from what?
It's, so we have very clearly acknowledged that the bond might not cover all of the roads. That's why we were pre, pre-planning to do something with chip seal. Now that's being rolled into the bond project.
Correct, and so is the money, the two hundred and twenty-seven thousand is being rolled into the bond project. So actually we'd have two point, two point four plus the two twenty-seven. So actually we have three point six million that we're going to do for, for roads is what we have to spend.
But that two hundred and twenty-seven thousand is still coming out of the one million that we're all talking about.
No, it's not.
So it's our, so when he says we have one point three million in our general fund.
Correct.
That does not include the two hundred and twenty-seven thousand that we've moved over into this year's budget.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was not clear on.
Correct.
So that's already set aside, so we would be down to one point one if we paid off the road, yeah. So, all right, that makes me feel a little bit more comfortable.
My concern with that, I just don't, I can't see how the math goes. If you take two hundred and twenty something thousand, two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars and roll it into the bond at five percent, um, how that's only going to be five thousand dollars over twenty-five years?
I, I mean, they, they presented us the math, you saw the charts.
I, I can't do the math in my head, but it's five per year. It's five per year.
Eight percent of those. It's good. Basically, our debt right now that we're paying off, we're paying one point nine nine, I believe, is the interest rate.
Eight-two.
One point eight-two, so we're, so if we roll it into the bond, we're taking one point eight-two debt. And we're fixing to pay off in six months, or let's just say nine months. And we're converting it to one point eight-two to a four point six five. And we're converting it to one point eight-two to a four point six-five, four point five percent for another twenty-five years.
Okay. I mean, everybody here is shaking their head like we were all just in agreement a couple of months ago and like thinking that was the better idea to do.
No, it's great.
So, like I said, I brought that idea to council and our financial advisors essentially changed our minds and convinced everybody sitting here to go a different route. And here we are just a couple of months later with different advice. And I just want to be sure because I don't want to make a bad decision.
City manager, different city manager, different funders. You know, good guy, but it is, it is different. I would say the same thing. It's like, hold it. Didn't we have this conversation and went a different direction? But, you know, the more I, the more I think about rolling it over and paying an extra, you know, more than twice the interest rate on the same amount of money. It's just like, that just doesn't seem to make, you know, I, I couldn't do that at all. You know, I, I did it once. I mean, I was joking because we did a sort of a debt consolidation thing and ended up paying for my used car for like twenty years. Yeah, it was a long gone. That, that name keeps coming back in my head. All right. We good? Moving on?
Yeah. That, that's the end of the presentation. I've been through the timeline already. We'll do that little bit of a market update if you'd like to hear. But we wanted to focus then on this plan of finance. The next two resolutions in front of you match what I just described.
I move that the city council adopt the resolution authorizing various actions to prepare for the issuance of the city of Wood Creek Texas general obligation bond series twenty twenty, which is before the council. Second?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, but it's having to be Bailey. Discussion. Number one.
Councilmember Chris Drummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hendrick.
Aye.
Councilmember David Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Flittembrecht Holy.
Aye.
Councilmember Lene Abey.
Aye.
That unanimous way.
Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
I move that the city council adopt the resolution of the city council, the city of Wood Creek, Texas, authorizing and writing for the, hmm, thank you, defenses and redemption of the outstanding city of Wood Creek, Texas tax note series two thousand and seventeen directing the redemption of such notes, which is before the council.
You have a second? Councilmember Everett. Question? May I follow along?
Councilmember Bob Hendrick.
Aye.
Councilmember David Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Flittembrecht Holy.
Aye.
Councilmember Lene Abey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Drummer.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, five to zero. And.
Mayor Mayor.
Moving along.
Mayor Mayor. I move that council sets their public hearing for their June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three leaving.
They move.
A little more down to what?
What?
Oh, the hearing is about what? So I should be started?
Yes.
Yes. Above ground rules.
You guys are good. Thank y'all so much.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry to move so.
Yeah. We're good. If y'all have any questions over the next month.
Anything here, anything like that.
I'll be, uh, hold it like a few tomorrow if they could notice. Oh, yeah, I'll get that.
We come out of this, but.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Drum, you want to do a poll of this, or you want to do it?
Let's go ahead and do it.
Oh, you're more set.
If y'all have any questions, looking forward next month, please send them to the council.
So we're.
Oh, that kind of worked.
Is it recent, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it is. And we're going to get free internet. Yeah. One more. But, but.
Typical ones.
Yeah, man, too.
You were clarifying the public hearing on vote ground pool for June 14.
I did.
And segmented by time?
Okay.
Mayor, very short. Signing and zoning is that their public hearing for the June 7th council respected will receive their report on or before councils meeting on June 14th.
All right, discussion. All right. Hold on.
Councilmember Deverhine.
Aye.
Mayor Chris Henry.
Aye.
Councilmember Renee Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Frimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hendrick.
Aye.
That's unanimously, we're going to public hearing on 14. Um, I don't know if state, it's got to take appropriate action on the calendar, designate specific weeks for certain applications. Do you want to make that motion?
I move that we approve the resolution of the city council of the city of Wood Creek creating a calendar designating specific weeks for the authorized timely submissions of signing, zoning, plotting, subdivision, demolition, or new construction building current application.
Second, by Mayor Chris Henry. Believe.
Miss, can be all of that wording is taken directly from the top of the resolution for you, so. Um, I had a couple of questions slash concerning on that. Let me find my notes. Sorry, I got really organized over here and realized I did organize people. So, um, on this item, on February 8th, we issued a motion to adjust section one. Those adjustments are missing. Um, specifically, it was to address the fact that we issued an administratively complete letter and that that letter would be issued during these time periods specifically. Um, and essentially, the attorney, Mr. Gordon, you asked for the time to work on it at home instead of us coming up with wording in the moment like we kind of did with the other changes.
Sure, my understanding was, was the issues that were brought to my attention were the desire to carve out regular applications from these weeks and to limit the number of applications.
Yeah, section three and four, on section one, we, there's one motion that's missed. We, we talked about addressing the idea of an administratively complete letter because that's what our, this mechanism from our city is this letter where we acknowledge we have a full and complete application.
That's right, that's our need to cover. We don't need to, I'm not sure why that would need to be in the.
Because, well, we'd all discussed it when there was a motion and we agreed to change the wording there. And why it's needed is because this talks about timely, it's a middle. But in that meeting, because I went back and watched it, we all came to the realization that somebody can submit application materials at any time period throughout the month, but that the review process of them, not to say we've got all your materials, but the actual review will only begin during these time periods. So that's the only time we'll submit with, in theory, the city would be sending out these, your applications is your, this is an administratively complete application. Then we said, no, those letters could be sent out at any time. So we were like, what then is so special about these time periods and how to convey that? And that was the wording you were going to work on. And so essentially, the idea is that during these timely submission periods, that is when, once you have an administratively complete letter, your application goes into the, the formal review and determination process.
And it could actually go into the next window, like you can get your letter earlier than window. And so that's what you would like for the next window.
Yeah, and, and certainly that's language we can add. I mean, to a certain degree, if you're going to add that language and you want to lay out the entire administrative structure within this resolution or just that component of it?
In our discussion, it was established that we needed to address the expectation of an administratively complete letter because that's what actually triggered everyone, the staff, anyone setting up this process, using the process of that's formed in this resolution. Anyone reading this resolution needs to understand that what timely submitted means, that is when the determination process starts, you will have received an administratively complete letter for the review process to occur during that.
So is section one to say further define what complete and timely submitted is?
Well, yeah, I mean, that was the discussion we had last time was essentially we were going to incorporate what our code actually uses, which is the idea of an administratively complete. We issue this letter that says that we've received all of your application materials. So the idea is if an application applicant thinks they've submitted everything and they're waiting on this shot clock and they're like, oh, these are your windows, I should be in this window, but they've not received that letter. That's actually what puts them into the window.
Yeah, that's our need to cover.
It is, but.
We don't have window in the code.
Yeah, that's what this does.
Right, but these two things do not obviously correlate.
Well, but that's not, people aren't going to go read the resolution, they're going to read the code.
We had all of this discussion before.
What would you like to say?
Well, that was, you asked for us not to do that in the meeting, the motion was already made and accepted. So what I'm saying is it's missing from this resolution.
Yeah, because it's in the code.
Yeah.
I think, or we say the same thing or not?
Um, well, essentially, we already have this conversation and a motion was made.
Forgive me, would you refresh my memory on precisely what, what language is missing? We can add it in, no problem.
So what we discussed in the last meeting was the terms and administratively complete letter.
Okay.
Are missing.
So you want me to take those terms from the code already and just put it in this resolution?
That was what we collectively decided was needed.
So, so the answer is yes.
Well, you said, is that what I want you to do?
What do you want me to do? Where do you want me to do it coming? You want me to take the language in the code and put it in the resolution? I can do that on the fly.
Sure, what I'm trying to convey is this entire body took a vote and issued a motion and those changes were not made in the document.
Okay, we're going over the same stuff over and over again. If we want the, the attorney to make that.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty easy to bring it back, then, then that's what we do. We've got the motion, can do it, but let's not keep, keep the dead horse here.
Uh, if I can keep going, um, on section three, the discussion previously was about highlighting specific things. And so the word minor is used here, which I'm concerned about because that's subjective and could cause, uh, bait. And what we talked about in the last meeting was specifying specifically the difference between new construction and work on existing residential structures. So that word, those words are kind of missing. I see work upon residential structures, but we specified the idea that these would already be existing structures. Um, and then we talked about how copying the language from the top of the resolution would be helpful here because what this actually only applies to is site development subdivision and rezoning specifically. Um, and then new construction.
So new construction probably would read that issue minor, right?
Um, it would not, but for example, if somebody is new constructing a shed, they could argue that that's minor. And this is where that word, that minor is subjective and I'm not even sure we have it clearly defined anywhere in our code right now.
Okay, so would the word existing prior to residential and after upon?
I think that's definitely needed for sure. Um.
So let me just, I want to make sure that I cover, if I can do this on the fly. Section one, you want to add the definition of administrative, or you want to add the language when in the issue?
Sorry.
Please go ahead.
I was going to say my proposal would need to add and once an administratively complete letter has been issued.
Okay.
By who?
The city.
That's you.
I would say my. Yeah.
Right, because before it was the, um, engineer was sitting there. And, and, and we took advantage of the subjective part of it. There's, there's, there's subjective elements to this, right? I mean, determining what the administrative complete letter, that can be subjective, you know, surgery, you want to be as objective as possible. So once an administratively complete letter issued by the city.
By the city secretary who's authorized to do it.
We don't have to.
But.
Section three, we're adding existing, what other changes do you want to do?
Well, I guess my, my concern was over the use of minor being subjective and would have been more helpful to clarify that we're specifically talking about new construction, site development, subdivision and rezoning.
Well, if I recall correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the idea was to carve out something that is less than the big work that requires the, the review on these six weeks identified, right?
Okay, so not intended, yeah, okay, so in telling proposed changes, additions, so I, I would strike minor. But maybe you want to leave it, it just concerns me because we have people here who say they're not cutting their trees when they're cutting their trees.
Sure.
You know, we have video of it.
Sure.
But, so, I mean, I'm sure that.
I think it makes more sense to leave it in.
Okay.
Uh, you know.
If just further define, like reshare.
Honestly, it makes more sense sometimes to not define everything, right? Because if you start defining it, you have to define everything.
So I think as long as you add the word existing after upon, that will probably cover the, the biggest concern there.
Section three.
Yes.
So with our work upon existing, whether it's.
And then I did have the question because at one point somebody talked about how this was already in effect. So.
Is it a religion? Well, because we adopted it at, at, right, the first.
No.
Okay, so I'm going to show what you're saying.
Uh, I received a communication that this was already implemented and that was just a little concerning, but one thing, just wanted to kind of understand what the point of a resolution, especially when it says that it goes into effect after its past, Todd, when we got in touch it, so I just.
All resolution.
Right. So are we already using this policy?
Has there been any submissions or stuff? Obviously there are.
No, in my view, it was, yes, that's the way it's presented.
Okay. Then I move that we, I mean, I really, through the, um, emotion on the floor, but I move that we accept these minor language changes of adding the language in section one.
So you're submitting, you just want to make your original motion?
That we accept these amendments as proposed for section one and three.
You asking me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, I see, I mean, we keep calling the roll, right? And that's, that's, that's what we have to do. But, but I'd say another, another.
Yeah, I mean, you can go either way, it's, it's a preference field. Any, any ordinances that have criminal penalties, call the roll, resolutions like this, I think you just all go aye.
Yeah.
And then, and then after somebody does aye, any council member can opt, can request a roll call though.
Does it say ayes and then seat ayes as well or just?
I mean, you can still just do a count without having to go person by person.
I just wanted to clear that up.
Sure.
Call for, show of hands, yeah, I can. We've called.
So I'm, 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 just so you know, I'm changing, I'm changing section one after the word only include the language to say once an administratively complete letter has been issued by the appropriate city official, but that might not always be the city secretary, the law changes. Then I am changing section three and adding the word existing prior to residential and after the word upon. And I would suggest that the proponents of this, uh, uh, motion, AKA friendly amendment on these two changes.
I, I just issued it.
Okay, great, I was typing.
Does, does the language, can you read the, like, does the language on section one work? So.
City council authorized the city staff administration management to accept the described applications here and on the following dates only, once an administratively complete letter is been issued by the appropriate city official and any applications submitted prior to or after the described, I don't know what the concept of, yeah, I think that works.
Okay.
So, just, uh, the amended language. Uh, come back and vote on the main motion.
Going on the amendment, councilmember Renee Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Frimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hendrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Deverhine.
Aye.
Mayor Chris Henry.
Aye. Thanks for this, that's the end, so we go to the main motion.
Mayor Chris Henry.
Aye.
Councilmember Renee Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Frimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hendrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Deverhine.
Aye.
Great, thank you all. Thank for your work on that.
Mayor, if I may? I move to discuss and take appropriate action on the city of Wood Creek's emergency manager.
Second.
Move, uh, councilmember Frimer. Secondary dividing, councilmember Heinz. Um, thank you for your work on this, uh, city manager.
Um, I'd also now like to offer an amendment that involves some edits. On page sixty-five of the cockpit. Can we get to that one? So, my, sorry, on page sixty-five of the cockpit, section four point O, where, um, I was just questioning, where's the, uh, statistics come from? Because the cycle when it comes to average median house price, uh, cycle has, I wrote it back. It was four twenty-five. That city. So I'm just curious, why not that number versus?
That, that was the average?
Yes, four twenty-five.
Um, it's probably the median is a change back.
Yeah, and it's median versus average, that's different.
Correct.
Yeah.
If it is, it's median instead of average.
Um, on page.
Oh, before you, before you move on, is, is that, are you okay with believing that's the way it is?
If that's.
As the median, is that accurate information?
Yes, yeah.
Actually, I just was asking, that was a question that specifically I had, unless the question was answered differently. Um, on page sixty-six, uh, the fourth paragraph, there is one city building, the city staff, and it says outside. And it says outside city limits. Um, we have one city building. The city staff inside.
No, that's that's deep reading. It says outside the city limits, the Wimberly. School district has seven campuses, library has one facility, and the three, so it's like, okay, we're here, and then outside of the city limits are these other four.
The O needs to be capitalized. Lowercase, that's where.
Yeah, it's a it's a new system, so the local capitalized outside.
So the question is, the city of Wood Creek has a city building outside of.
No.
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 The city of Wood Creek has one building. Inside the city limit. Outside, I am curious. Outside, and I'll put it, it's a cap real.
Thank you.
I have a period there.
Um.
Um, remember, I've got something on this page before we go somewhere else, just when you're ready.
Yep, please.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Okay, so um, on school campuses, I I think there's an error here. Uh, because it. It says they have three campuses. But there are not just three campuses. They have an administrative building, a high school, a middle school. An auxiliary campus, a stadium, and then they have. Two more campuses. And you can see them, it's the Wimberly High School, Danforth, they have Jacob's Wall and Google.
I see.
So there's like a weird type, like, count off on their campuses.
They have what now?
They have, well, they have two athletic stadiums for one.
Aye.
And they have. They have actually five school campuses, but it's odd because they look, the, it just lists the high school and middle school. And then it stops listing their other campuses, and then it says in addition, it has. Three more, but they actually only have two more beyond that list.
So they have one administration building, one high school, one middle school.
One auxiliary.
One auxiliary, two stadiums.
Yep. And then two more campuses.
Two more, yes, okay, change three, two, okay.
I've got a question. Um, you know, we, and it's um, it really is is. Comes up in a couple of places, you know, emergency shelter, um, provided by first office and barn system, we also um rely on the camp for emergency. Um, shelter. Can we check into that?
We we, yeah, we have that. I don't, I didn't have any records of that, so we can check and see.
I I I I've heard before that they are sort of the, um, I think from Tim, temp work, that, you know, they're sort of the, you know, sort of backup to the church.
We definitely used them before, that's why the people were housed.
Well, for the emergency responders, you know, or whatever.
I wonder if it's because they don't have operational staff that live here.
I don't know, it's just that when when I talk to Tim, temp work, who's like the. You know, works in management, who, you know, he said, okay, so you've got the camp and you've got, you know, the. Barn disconnection, you got, you know, so like, for instance, if if something were happening and people couldn't get out this way. You know, they would go to camp, or maybe it was just the best one. So anyway, I just look into whether they consider them to have an emergency. Shelter, you know.
Yeah, I'm sure they, I'm sure.
Or like the VFW even? I guess it's not big enough.
Um, well, the difference is how many people they can help.
Okay.
And VFW, I mean, VFW is a center, I mean, it's more, it would be served more like as a command center typically. Um, because they can't really help anybody. They can feed a few people, but but like the best person to feed them is that would be. All right? I mean, look like.
No, I don't know.
Okay. Okay, thanks, thanks. Can we check on that?
Yes.
If I may continue. Um, on page sixty seven, it says that we have assistance within facilities within the city limits, and we listed them, we. Are not within the city.
Uh.
Yeah.
Okay. Outside.
Um. And then. On seventy five, bullet point three. City Public Information Office. Maybe we should replace with city secretary.
Probably the officer.
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 Okay. One way to say.
Well, it's. That's page seventy five?
Page seventy five, bullet point three. Um, but, yeah, then on page sixty seven, that's why I went to city secretary, because then it describes two letters. So it's a bit more. And then page sixty seven. Um, Wood Creek. On page sixty seven, I'm sorry. Um, Wood Creek does not have a position called Public Works Supervisor.
On seventy six, not fifty.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Dislexia. Um, seventy six. Uh, maybe just strike D entirely.
That would be Aqua, really, I guess, Aqua B D. But they're they're listed D as well?
Well, no, that'd actually be me.
Okay.
So, um.
So just add it to city manager then, I guess? Or strike it?
Just strike it.
Because it, yeah, it's about.
That's fine, yeah, we can just take out the.
While we're on this page, letter P, we are not our own neighboring municipality.
That was my next one, yes.
I should say Wimberly.
Yeah, I should say Wimberly. Um. Now I move on to chart on page eighty five. Um, I would remove. Or I should ask the question. Wimberly Water Supply is listed, but Aqua is our water provider.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I just.
Yeah.
So it might be confusing if we list it, and people are going to be calling that location.
Would you take out Wimberly Water Supply as Aqua Water?
Yeah.
Aqua America.
Is that their official company name? Is everyone called, it's Aqua Texas here.
Uh, Aqua Texas.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, like.
We can call it Aqua Texas here.
Um, so I have the address for you if you'd like. Eleven oh six Clayton Lane. Number four hundred. Austin, Texas. Seven eight seven two three. Um, the next is Texas Disposal Systems, needs to be replaced.
But wait, go back to that address, why would you use the Wimberly address with the, because if there's a.
No, that's the Aqua, Aqua America. Aqua America's address.
They have the 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 uh. This is where the two individuals. Um, when you have a leak or whatever, this is the local office that they come out of.
So that's probably the difference between Aqua America and Aqua Texans, which is why you might want to say Aqua.
Okay, I've, yeah, I've already changed Aqua Texas, but if we're, yeah, like, when you have a wastewater, like, um, Cypress Point or whatever. If they would call in, it would be the the gentleman from Wimberly that come over there, so I kept, it, and we could change it out.
Okay.
I don't care, but just because if there's emergency, it's going to be the guys from here that's going to come, it's not going to be from Austin. Right, it's going to be the two gentlemen.
I was putting my corporate. That was.
Yeah, I mean, we can change it if you want.
I go with you. Um, the next one is, we have Texas Disposal System.
Yeah.
And it should be Waste Connection, plum star A. But are you? Um, still on page eighty six.
Eighty six.
Or we, eighty six.
It's page twenty nine of the of the document.
Okay.
Um. My question also is, it keeps referring to Wimberly Independent School City, maybe not, maybe it should be.
It's a.
Yep.
Um, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's all that's here.
And those are my edits.
Was that the only one? District where the city, the district.
Not the only one.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'm just through, when you look through the document, Wimberly, Independent School.
It's there. Got it.
And and this document um was provided to us um by Wimberly.
Aye.
And so there there's a. It's it's a understandable, it's.
Absolutely, it's a big document, and I just, like, we work together as a team, we find these.
No, that's great.
Here's a.
So great.
They're they're very, uh, very.
So it does say Wimberly ISO on sixty six.
Yeah, and I said too, is that the?
I think it's, I think it's typo, it's the I N D.
Yeah. Um, I will say that they didn't have a lot of. This information.
Yeah, this was, this was the document with OCR and the the OCR pad, that's why the fonts are all. And the D's turned to O's.
Oh, so what page were you on?
It was all over page sixty six.
This, yeah, the other third place on W I S O. And I know I saw, I saw it, I was reading through, and I. Didn't mark it. Obviously.
So that's all I have.
It's in a couple pages on that page.
No.
Control.
Okay.
So. My amendment is with those edits.
None of them are substantial, I don't think you knew that.
Okay.
So this all just.
No, we can correct that. Oh, there is, um, on page fifteen of the document, page seventy two of the packet, and then chart. And they're just a typo in public information.
Oh.
And they were.
Yeah.
If we get public information on, so they were thought of.
Oh, actually liaison is spelled wrong as well.
It is, oh, yeah, liaison is.
Yep. Be another I.
I've been spelling that word for thirty years.
And in administration. Oh, bless.
Okay.
Oh, my. Nobody can tell you, who's doing this?
Crazy.
Well, what what scares me is I almost on one of the three, you know? I don't know, journalism, they actually see this.
Hey, it's not a number I don't see yet.
Yeah, I know. All right, so we have a motion to um to approve the emergency plan with the amendments. Or the edits suggested to pass.
Um, second.
Well, we had, we actually had never seconded it, we just voted on it.
Give me a second, Terry. Council member Bob Hendrick.
Aye.
Council member David Hines.
Aye.
Mayor Chris M. Brett Coley.
Aye.
Council member Renee Bailey.
Aye.
Council member Chris Frimmer.
Aye.
And the plan passed the announcement, thank you very much, we will. Go on to the next item of business, which is the second step of action on the communication policies.
Uh, Mr. Gordon and myself was asked by council to bring an updated or bring a communication policy. Back to council, and so this is the communication policy, really, the only, um, kind of the changes is that, um. Communication goes through the city manager, kind of a spoken wheel, where it comes through me and then it needs to go Mr. Gordon, or to K threes, or to. The appropriate thing, um, I disseminate that information for expectancy and cost savings. And so that, so you almost work so hard. In case of somebody else. If Brent has, is doing it, and somebody asks me, I'll, I will know rather than say, I don't know. This is, yeah.
Good. Okay, see the motion? I make a motion that we approve the uh, this new communications uh, ordinance.
Second. Decision? May I may? Seven? Um, what's before us right now is not what we discussed in the, in our workshop on. Uh, February twenty first, twenty twenty four. And what we discussed, the day policy and um attorney. City attorney Gordon said that the best place for such a thing would be getting a resolution. Um, and also. The discussion was about creating the uh. Council Liaison four one one document, which was. The council on the four one one document is one direction, and we discussed having what the board's communication would be like towards.
That's actually a different document, it it's the um. There's the liaison four one one that we still have to. Work on, and then it's the uh. Like committee boards four one one that we need to um still develop.
And so I have a minute to inform you, and the discussion was that this was all going to be one thing, it was going to be a policy. Not.
We brought, yeah, we brought this for you just for expectancy, so we can be there, if you want to wait till all the documents are complete. We can, we can surely do that.
The other thing I'd like to discuss is the word for individually, what this does is it removes. It basically fundamentally removes the ability of any individual council member to speak to any member of a board or committee. Not a, not a, you have to see the manager version. So it makes it very difficult for. A person to be a liaison, or it becomes then what is the, what is the purpose of a liaison? Because.
So the way you read this as a liaison cannot speak to the chair or the committee without going through the city manager?
The way it's written, it's written that it would, the liaison would send an email to the city manager, the city manager would send it to the. Liaison, liaison would send it, or response to the city manager, the city manager would send a response to the chair, and it would be this kind of conversation, and I can tell you that. When we have our ad hoc communications. We literally go like, so should we meet Thursday at twelve, or should we meet at a little hour? Oh, I don't know, how about, I'm busy, how can we move it to one? Like, if everything's going back to the city manager, I have to wait till you've seen it, and then she gets to see it, or Karen, or.
Or like we share, like, well, and that committee is not a great example because they're ad hoc, but like. For example, there's like just informational documents that it's like, hey, read this before the next meeting. It pertains to what we're talking about, like, they sent me some stuff on like RV, like the classification of RVs, so we've got. In theory, send that to Kevin, and then have it all funnel through Kevin. So just to kind of back up council member Gorman on this topic and expand on what his concerns are that I'm hearing anyway. Or, you know, back in, we'll say January, February, I can't remember which meeting it is, it's like your first meeting, sit with that since you're one. And or second meeting or something, but. I I don't know, but Ke- Kevin knew, and um. We're, the idea was that too much money had been spent and too many people were talking to K threes. So the idea for the original communication policy was going to be the I, that we do not speak to. Our contracted employees without going through Kevin, and this would include the attorney. And we were all a little bit like, I don't know how we feel about this, at that point in the meeting, we all agreed, please develop the policy. And for now, we're going to B C C Kevin, or just run most things through him, and that's what we've been doing. And then in February, um, on the twenty first, we had a workshop, and in that workshop. We realized, hey, we need a broader communication policy beyond just council talking to vendors. We don't have any kind of policy for advisory boards talking back to council, we don't have any kind of policy, like, you know, we don't have, and then we realized, oh, the council liaison four one one probably shouldn't have been in a resolution. And so then it was that, well, what if we write a one resolution? That embodies these communication policies, and we talked, we listed them out, and it was. The original communication policy of. Council with vendors or any board with vendors. It was the liaison four one one, and you briefly looked at it, and you're like, ah, it could maybe be cleaned up a little bit, you know, not a big deal, but it should, should have been passed in a resolution. We talked about involving the social media communication policy because it lacked a resolution, but it's been passed. And then that's when that advisory board component was added on, because that was the need discussed in that meeting. So my concern here tonight, if we're changing code. Which is very different than a policy, and we talked about where does policy go, because it might change more frequently, and it wasn't in code, we talked about its best place is resolution. And my other concern about what's before us is it doesn't simply restrict. Council talking to vendors, it goes beyond that, and I'm a little bit concerned about the other restrictions. I don't disagree that the expensive funds should be run through our fund manager, and that's council or anybody talking to vendors, but. The the constriction of the rest of the communication. Is pretty concerning to me.
Yeah, I have a problem with the city, I'm the committee's advice, this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I I like the idea of of government consultants going to the city manager, uh, but like a bit of talking by committee members, you know, that just keep going through you, so. Maybe we can, we can adjust this, I don't mind it's in an ordinance, I mean, I don't matter to me, but um. and I don't think, we really want to make it to, if I need to talk to Suzanne, I gotta go through you first. Is that what we wanted?
No, no, that's not, that's not what, it's not what it says.
Well, but an email to Suzanne should be TT.
Yes, can see.
Yeah, but that's what it says, the office vote.
I get that, I really get, it seems to, I mean, I think we can tweak the wording so that it doesn't seem to us that we can't talk or email Suzanne directly, but I always see, you know, it's usually you two are always together, again, you know, yeah.
Yeah, we don't.
Yeah, true.
I said it during.
Yeah, exactly, but I don't, I don't like that good that I can't talk to my committee members, because that's going to make it hard to, to, to work with that.
And this is the inherent conflict in what we're talking about, right, is, is you want to set a policy, but then you don't want to have limitations on what you actually do, right? And Kevin and I were talking about the practical reality of the four-one policy. What's written on that paper is not what happened. So, so the fact is, is, I mean, I've read that policy and then I watched the meetings, and, and it shouldn't be an equal. You know, the fact is, it's in dialogue and in debates, we don't, we don't look at the rules first, and we're having a conversation in city hall, outside city hall, over the phone, on email, or whatever. And so, I'm, I'm sensitive to the idea of creating a, a set of rules and guidelines to dictate how y'all do your work, because I don't know how y'all do the work, right? And so, if, if you feel that there are specific requirements that we need to incorporate in this, in this kind of reverse four-one-one, the opposite direction we're talking about, I think that's something that Kevin and I can put together for y'all. But, but right now, like, I mean, this is, this is kind of the example that I gave earlier of, if you start, if you start defining everything, you gotta define everything. So, sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Do you want to scroll back to the drawing board?
Well, I mean, I would support, you know, saying that talking to consultants, you know, writer, engineers, like, needs to go through you. In terms of, if we do talk to committee or the staff, it's got to be CC to you, you know, I mean, is that workable or? Or help with city manager?
So I'm gonna go back to this point, where it really says, council member communications, the municipal city manager shall be designated communications officer for the express purposes of communications between the governing body as a whole or individually, and members of city committees slash commissions, city staff and/or consultants. So, the part of, and members of city committees, that means, so I'm not on the tree board, but if somebody on the tree board approaches me or sends me an email, I can't respond, I have to go to him? Or, actually, they shouldn't have ever sent me an email?
They should get CC'd.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to come up with a workaround.
Yeah, I think, I think that it's just, I don't see why we need to have city committees slash commissions in there.
Or individually.
Yeah, I, I did see that, I see exactly what you're talking about. I think the idea here is, this would be inherent challenge of creating a policy for communications that typically aren't government policies.
Well, that's why, also, I'm, I'm, I'm agree with councilmember Heinz, I don't like it in ordinance. This is. Yeah.
I don't think we build this into our code based on what you're talking about, and that was the discussion we had, where is the best place? It's in a policy document, because as Mr. Rule explained, policy is more frequent to change. Our code should be a pretty hard force and rule that we don't touch with, right? But policy documents might get updated with the change of staff, or we decide something is not working for us, or whatever. So, that's what the resolution, right, and so, for us, what we realized was, yes, all vendor communication needs to go through Kevin, and we're not talking BCC, we're like, our, whatever the other, CC, right? Because he's, he's managing the money, and we understand that that's important. Where we wanted communication policy wasn't so much that it says what we could do or can't do, but what we lacked in our city is a very clear understanding of the flow of information and how it should move through these advisory boards with staff and with council or liaisons, you know, if that program continues. So that was that other sort of second policy document that came up. We get that there's maybe two things here. We talked about lumping them together out of the idea that it would just be a simpler, one resolution to fix all, or whatever. So, that's what I would like to see. I, I don't think we want to put this in code. If we put anything in code, it's the idea that the city manager controls the money, and so, speaking with vendors go through him, but the rest of it, I would like to not see there, and it just, let's go to a resolution. Let's talk about those, you know, the, what we've struggled with is understanding the flow of the document. Where, where, where does it go next? Or, if P and, you know, that idea that P and Z have to have that report, yes, it's in the state code, right? But how many people are going and reading the state code every time they get on the council? Every time we have a new council member, that new council member has to go learn state code, but it'd be more likely that they would read a policy that we have, you know what I mean? So, that's, that is what I call.
Also, to.
I would recognize that it's talking, I'd like to be recognized this time.
You done?
Yes.
I, I don't care, I mean, policy, if it works better, I think it's fine. I like the idea that council has to go through city manager to talk to attorneys, engineers, to our consultants, because that, that's a cost control measure. I don't think it's essential. In terms of staff and committees, I think we need to tweak that to where, you know, at least your CC don't, so talk to each other. One thing that does kind of concern me, though, I don't like council members just, you know, calling by, let's say, my committee chair and start saying, I want you to put this on your agenda. I'd rather that go through me, you know, and we've had that issue.
Please they need, like, meet the liaison.
Yeah, instead of just talking directly, that bothers me, and it has to happen, so I don't know how we accomplish all that. I think that's the concept, attorneys, consultants, engineers, that stuff goes to you, staff committees, your CC, and then the, with regard to liaison, talking to those committees, communication should go through liaison and CC staff. I mean, that, that's how I think I would clean it up, but, you know, it's policy fine. I don't know how y'all feel about that.
When, y'all, y'all have a workshop on Tuesday next week? Yeah, okay, yeah, I think, I think we can pin this up on.
There, I think. Also, to step off or refer back to that previous workshop where we had this discussion, which was, we'd had discussions about how committees, we might wish to make this idea of all committees, if they're passing something to council, give the report to, to you.
They do.
But we, we were wanting that into this policy. That was going to be one of the aspects that we live in.
Okay, yeah, yeah, now, now, any, anything that is recommended to council, like the tree board, or the, let's say, the, the rogue, RFP, or, or anything from P and Z, comes from a recommendation letter that will be in the packet, like you receive from P and Z, like you receive from the hot committee, like you receive from, I mean, the zoning. We've done that three times, and those are the three items that have gone through you, so that has already changed that. Before something comes out of the committee and sent to council for recommendation, there is a letter, transcendental letter, that, that is in the packet, and you're all received, that gives background on how they came to that inclusion, and then their recommendations, so we have some backfill on kind of some history of how they came to that inclusion, and what collusion they, what inclusion that came to, and the recommendation that they are officially sending to council.
So, also, I'd like to, that the liaison been included in that report. So when the chair sends, the chair of whatever committee, sends the final report to be sent to council. They send it to you.
Mm-hmm.
And the liaison, so that way the liaison prepares.
Oh, yeah.
So that's.
And I thought, I thought it happened.
No, I'm saying that this was the discussion that I thought of the communicating policy was going to be, was, we had this whole big workshop about it, and then.
But they write a policy, they send it to the city manager, and CC the liaison. Is that correct?
Really?
That, that the committee would write the, write the report, they send it to the city manager, and CC the liaison. Is that, is that correct, this is what we, yeah, that's no problem.
The other things we talked about in that meeting was the idea that the advisory boards lacked, like, like, you know, I know they have those binders now, but at the time, it was like, they weren't clear when their deadlines were, and you would set them in a meeting, but like, the idea that in this communication document, it's like, you have to submit your packet materials on this day before a meeting, and like, these things are kind of more clearly outlining the basic procedure for communication. How do you submit your agenda material items, right, like, you know, so that every time we can give somebody this and they understand how the city works versus retraining everybody, and it being different, because it is different. And then, I, I do want to get away from the idea that we have any, like, filters, because in my opinion, there is, nobody should be filtering anything, meaning, it's like, if something comes from council, and, and I own, I created the document, and council's like, yes, this goes to, to Platinum Panel, then I, I copy the Platinum Panel liaison, and I send it to the chairperson, I send it to staff, it goes to everybody, and that we're not like, setting up all of these additional filters and expectations for, for like, a telephone communication or waiting on people to get to their emails. Does this make sense? I think, just we're really going after more BCC, better communication, and being able to track the flow of things. That was the whole point of the liaison, so it's the filter, or stop, or control. It was to ensure things were moving as they were supposed to be and be able to, to have that communication between the board. So, that, that would be my recommendation as you're, as you're working through this. Oddly enough, and I'm not saying you should use this, but Mr. Miller randomly sat in that meeting and generated this really interesting chart, and I'm just gonna give it to you guys because I'm not going to be developing this, but he, it was, it would be for his ideas, and we talked about this before, but if you'd like to.
In the plug card.
Yeah, it was, he saw it in that meeting, and there were options, so it's not just like one op, he just wrote, laid out options, because what we're forgetting is that, like, this might all make a lot of sense to us, but we've got this whole public of people who's watching our meetings and not necessarily always understanding why things are going the way they are. And we've lacked the policy documents to point to and be like, this is the procedure, this is what we're doing, this is why it's like this. So we find ourselves having to defend and explain ourselves over and over because we've lacked these guiding channel documents, you know? Just sort of the clear, yeah, and we're having to retrain people over and over, you know, versus.
It's always gonna happen.
Yes, but when you have a little tiny sheet.
You just hand it to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, proper plug cards and descriptions is gonna help a lot.
Yeah, well, yeah. Okay.
All right, so we're just going to.
I, I, I'll try to get some draft pretty awful, what you say. I'm not gonna be at the meeting on Tuesday, so I'll talk to my colleagues on T H L. It might be on Tuesday that I, that I try to listen, but go through before the meeting starts.
So, both on this, so, yeah?
Well, the motion is to approve that.
No. We, we draw the motion, or we can?
Okay.
Yeah, I could draw the motion.
And to second it?
I did, yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay, thank you, good conversation. Where's Chris Chen-Brittoli? Still a ten on traffic?
Yeah.
Or monitor?
Yeah. Okay, first of all, if you're on the packet. And.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of data.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of data in there, and believe me, there's more where that can be done. But, yeah, take a look at, at where that, the Gennaheim starts, it's, let me see, page.
Yeah.
Yes, page, looks like page.
Well, that's the cover sheet.
Yeah, page one hundred, yeah. That's kind of where it starts, and I'll walk you guys through that.
And, and before you, sir, can you also remind people that if they want to be able to access this in real time, that we can get the method?
Yeah, absolutely, you can get access to this and look at either, you know, what's, what's currently, the stations that are currently in place, or you can go back and look at historical data where these stations have been in place. So you can go back to, you know, a couple of years, I guess, for how long, and see what's the result, where you can also generate reports. You just kind of put in the parameters, and it generates the report, and, you know, give you, you know, graphs and whatnot, it kind of helps you interpret the data. So there's a lot you can do with that, and I didn't, you know, obviously produce every report for everything, I just wanted to give you a sample. But let me kind of tell you what I want to do tonight. First, I want to thank Katie Offer, Mike Stewart, and Joseph Bronco, they're watching, they're helping. The, with the committee, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, deal with traffic situation, and specifically with the Hayes County Sheriff's Office. This is a big issue for our community. Our latest survey, fifty-seven percent agreed that we needed some kind of traffic calming method, and then fifty-nine percent of people said it was very important, or somewhat important, that we do that. So this is a priority with the community, and that's reflected in our, in our recent survey. This council has worked hard to solve issues like getting roads fixed, getting the pond passed. We've solved the pond with our green space and our parks by getting grants and whatnot, so we're, have tackled tough things, and we've done it successfully. It's time to start talking about this in what we're gonna do. What I want to tell you is kind of what activities we've had, I want to talk a little bit about these radar reports that I'm walking through, and then Hayes County Sheriff Office reports, and then give you my impressions of where we're at, and, and then look to you for guidance on what we want to do next. The main takeaway is going to be that Hayes County Sheriff Office patrols are helping, but they're not the ultimate answer. I mean, there's a design flaw with the way these streets are laid out, and we're gonna have to deal with that. Of course, we may not be enough unless we have our own police force, and we're not gonna have that anytime soon. In terms of activities, what we're doing right now, the, the officers coming out twice a week, instead of once a week, doing two two-hour shifts. That was at his request. He wanted to, he said it would be more effective to be out here more and doing it two-hour shifts instead of one four-hour shift. So he's doing that. Currently, he's generating, he worked from five, four or five tickets for two-hour shift, so that, for the week, you know, that would be nine or ten tickets he's writing, which, considering if it takes fifteen minutes to stop, he's, he's spending most of his time pulling somebody over. So, that's good. In, in terms of the, that's kind of limited, because limited with how much radar cars that they have actually available, and trained personnel that can deal with it, and just getting people to come out to Wood Creek, we're kind of maxed out at that, you know, right now. Getting a guy to come out twice a week for two hours each shift is probably the most we're gonna get from what I'm hearing from them. Again, we are moving the radar signs, apparently, and getting the input data from them, so what I'd like you to do is take, start taking a look at these radar reports, and again, the first one starts on page one hundred. Some of the key data to look at, or at least I look at, this one here is at city hall, this one right over there. And so, it's interesting to see what we've generated from that. First of all, if you look in the bottom right corner of that report on page one hundred, you'll see a traffic overall count. That's four hundred thirteen cars a day going past city hall. Of that, if you look, you know, on that bottom row, if you look, there's a number nine, there's a whole row of numbers, there's one oh nine, then there's a number nine. Those are the cars that are going between thirty-one and thirty-five miles an hour, so that's nine a day. Doesn't sound like a lot, but for that little area, it probably is. If you go to the next page, these are the graphs that this generates, where you can see, you know, speed by volume. You can also see volume over time, it just gives you a, you know, what kind of range of speeds we have, and how compares, you know, how you compare that to, you know, the relative speeds that people are going. The other's the volume over time, you can isolate, you know, when we have the most traffic. Take a look at the next report, which is on page one oh two, that's the, the one that's at thirty-five Wood Creek. That's the one, it's at the island right now, it's facing east, I guess, right? And you see the numbers there, and the key numbers, I'm looking at the bottom right-hand corner, twelve hundred cars a day, that's a lot, man. If you look at that number between thirty-one and thirty-five, it's seventeen that are going in excess of thirty-one miles an hour. You do see that there's two that is registered, it's going thirty-six, forty. That didn't seem like a lot, but, you know, and most of that's happening in probably eight hours. So that would generally mean a couple an hour, or, you know, going over thirty-one miles an hour. Again, you see the graphs there, that's on the next page, which is page one of three. This is a historical, and this is five Wood Creek Drive, it was facing eastbound, and here's the data that we got from that. We're looking at the second, okay, yeah, the one on, the one on the island is westbound traffic, it's monitoring westbound traffic. The one on five Wood Creek Drive monitored eastbound traffic. I picked a lot of Wood Creek ones because there's just a lot of traffic there, and it gives me a good picture. The one on, on five Wood Creek Drive monitored eastbound traffic. I picked a lot of Wood Creek ones because there's just a lot of traffic there and it gives me a good picture. Take a look in the bottom right hand corner of that report on page mile four, you've got over eleven hundred cars. Uh they're going eastbound on Wood Creek Drive. And then you look at that number thirty one to thirty uh five. Ninety two cars are going thirty one to thirty five. And again, most of those are in just a compressed area of time. That's a lot. And then you've got seven more that are going thirty six to forty. So that's almost a hundred cars a day. You, you picked up on our radar station, they're going over thirty one miles an hour. That's beginning to get disturbing. Uh again, you see the graphs here and uh, the next page for five Wood Creek Drive. Uh next one, seventy four Wood Creek Drive, that's on page uh, well, six of your uh packet. That was the one that was down by Deborah's house at the bottom of that big hill. It's interesting because you see a drop off in traffic there, it's seven fifty five. Still a lot, but that tells us a lot of people were turning off at work hollow and. Yeah. Here's what's disturbing about this. If you look to see how many people are going thirty one to thirty five, you got eight. Eight a day. And that's again in a compressed, you know, time period. Cause yeah, you don't have a lot of people coming through here.
Also a lot larger percentage of seven hundred fifty five.
Yeah, that's a lot to be concerned. Excellent point. Then you've got eight that are going uh, you know, thirty six to fifty, uh thirty six to forty. So you've got uh, you know, almost ninety people. Yeah, right, that's right. So uh, yeah, again, there's your graphs on one oh seven. Uh here's the one on Brook Hollow, I was interested in that because, you know, that's a, that's a, a racetrack, man. Interesting here, look uh, on page one oh eight, bottom right hand corner, I'm surprised that volume's only five hundred twenty three. Um but that, that's one station on Brook, no, Brook Hollow. So, yeah, I, I thought it would be higher. Here it's only showing eleven people going thirty one to thirty five. Again, I don't know where sixty three Brook Hollow is. And sometime it's affected by where, where it's placed, you know, it was placed after a stop sign, it was placed, you know, you know, on the corner. That was done.
It's about a block pass.
So that, that could tell a fact.
So that's, that's going out, you know. Oh, that's when it was placed around.
Okay, alright, yeah. So yeah, that does sound effect, uh you know, in terms of what kinda speed readings we get. Uh so I, you know, I thought that's, that's interesting. Those are the ones that I picked. There's, you can pick it for all kinds of industries that we have. And it'd be good for you to get on there and look for yourself. And we're trying to speed through this a little bit. Next thing I want you to look at is a, uh the Sheriff Office reports. There's a good and Vicky uh Offer has been good about keeping these projections of the day. I, they stopped it in April just to get this in the package. But there, there's the overall numbers on page one ten. And you kinda see, you know, how many. Speedings, uh you know, citations above thirty five, Monica talked about this in detail. That kinda gives it just a bird's eye view of what's going on. Um, you know, so that, that's helpful. Uh so, that's the reports I wanted to walk you through. My impressions again, we need to take a next step. I think enforcement is working, but unless we have our own police people, it can be on there every day. Uh I think we're maxed out on it. Uh my guidance to you is doing nothing is not an option at this point. I think we've got to figure out what to do next. Now what we do, how we pay for it, when we do it. And I'm talking traffic calming. And uh, the comforting thing about it is we've got a big plurality of people, fifty seven to fifty nine percent. You know, wants something done. So it's very important or somewhat important. That's, that's, this damn time, you get that many people agreeing on anything. I think you have a sense. So that's it. I wanted to open this up and start the discussion. What are we gonna do? Uh and, and you know, just may end up rolling off to the uh, to the workshop.
Oh, I, I was downplaying how, um, because, well, we were on the, the first reports, those are generated from those traffic. Uh from the radar.
Yeah, the first uh reports, the graphs and everything, those radar stations generate that. And, and you'll kinda, it's a little weird, you know, it's kinda funky, but you'll figure out how to generate reports. You'll tell it, you know, what days you want, what locations you want. And then you can tell it, well, arrange it, you know, by uh, by speed, give it by volume, by time, or, you know. How can you figure out how to, how to do that?
Because the traffic volume, I've been doing that calculating by this formula. So that will help.
Yeah, yeah, sure, Earl numbers. Yeah.
Well, this is great timing. I've actually been working on a packet uh for us to consider. Um about um their movable speed hump. Um, how this started is there's a resident on Augusta who had a pretty significant scare involving children. Uh and team drivers. And I won't go into the details of that, but basically I got frantic messages about. How scary it actually is. And I'm like, I know, I know, I live on one of the worst streets. So that's the history of how this started. Um, we, through speaking with that individual, we went through like a brainstorming of like, this is what I've been researching since we started this. Because, you know, way back when, I was, and I'm gonna tie you in in a minute, researching traffic calming. What can our city do? What's realistic for us? How expensive is this stuff? When does this need to happen? And one of the things that she and I landed on that seemed reasonable specifically for Augusta Lane, which is where they live. Is a rubber speed hump because it can be purchased and put in immediately. And then we had another individual on Wood Creek Drive recently on next door complaining about the speeding at their house. Because I posted an incident where a, a vehicle literally ran a bop car off the road. Because they refused to yield to a bop car that was already in the road. Uh so. That person was like, we need speed bumps on Wood Creek Drive. And I'm like, we do. So when Wood Creek Drive was redone, they did not plan any traffic calming or any kind of adjustments or anything. And we, you two advocated for that. I advocated as a citizen. It was very frustrating. Movable speed bumps, the most expensive ones, I have it up right now, are like seven hundred dollars. You can get cheaper ones that are. Canier, but the, the more expensive ones are, are larger, which people have talked about how they prefer the larger over the skinny bump. I know there's been opposition to speed hunts, but it's a very doable now action item that can also be adjusted. To the city's needs because we're aware that we're about to be redoing roads. So we don't wanna go out and put a bunch of speed bumps in that. Right, but we could purchase these and they can actually be used for a lot of other things when we have events. They can be used to set out parking, you know, they can be used to indicate no parking. I mean, there's just a lot of other uses. So I was going to ask council to consider buying some of them. And I've kinda been working on like, where should we place them in the city? And kind of a, like a package of like proposal. So that would be what my first request is. Um we've already asked the, and this is where I'm bringing the Platinum Panel in. We have sent a request to the Platinum Panel for them to be looking at additional signage throughout the city that might be needed. Um they're not there yet because they're dealing with the bond stuff. My question to you, your family though, is. In all of this design and planning that's going on, how is traffic calming being addressed? Because we did ask for that of the Platinum Panel, but we've kinda been so taken up with just improving the roads. That we're kinda forgetting that we need to be planning this in the road improvements.
Okay, and very good point, but um, you know. I, I've been reviewing these numbers and looking at complaints for traffic. And uh, it seems a little funny, but it's Wood Creek and Brook Hollow primarily. Well, Brook Meadow as well, um Augusta, but a lot of the other streets, you go one twenty, you can break an axle. But so, I think we get all the rest of these streets saying, we're gonna have a mega problem.
We don't have a major problem. I mean, Brook Hollow is keeping it up for us.
So we need to address that now. Um. I'm top city manager and would you um, talk about this net? Or the ones that would work on both Hollow that you had mentioned?
Oh, the uh, yeah, I kinda, I'm gonna go into, uh, they are not mentioned in the current proposal, the R F P for the road project. That is only for pavement. Uh one is because we wouldn't have any, we may have money left over. But I don't, I think it's gonna be pretty close to, we really don't have that money. Those speed bumps, that need to be, that needs to be uh. You know, put in the budget or do a budget adjustment or something like that, if you wanna add them instead of putting them to the, in my opinion, but you can do whatever. Uh, we were waiting to get all the roads completed and then we're looking at doing striping. And also um purchasing um. Traffic control or calming mechanisms. We don't have a preference, or I don't, I don't think that. Have a preference on, on which one we get, but we weren't there yet. We're gonna wait till the uh, the uh, the roads got finished. Now, if you wanna purchase a couple before you in and, and put them out.
You can't just throw a traffic calming device on the road, you gotta have to take a traffic study. So there, there's, there's consultants that use reporting that. That's something that's on y'all's radar? Would this, these reports be considered? These ones, it would be used by the traffic consultant, but the traffic consultant definitely has to provide you a report. Or you often get out there and they just sit on there. Whether the bumps or those plastic thing that would you use? Uh especially on common roads, you're, it's just a, a feature mechanism. But if y'all are talking about it, it should be something.
It does, well, it seems like it might be very wise to consider using something, getting this done. Having something on Wood Creek. Then when our roads are, are finished, we'll have some experience. On what seems to be working. I think a lot of people are more in favor of traffic calming than. I've been six months ago.
No, it is, um, you know, first of all, we did, we did mention to the Platinum Road Panel that as we go through this process of planning. You know, the resurfacing of the pavement to keep traffic calming as part of that engineering setting. And so if you've got the engineers looking at the roads, they, hey, here'd be a perfect place. You know, to do a little white spot and slow traffic down. That's what we wanted, you know, not just, oh, there's a good place for a bomb. You know, so, so we wouldn't like for the engineers be thinking in terms of, of, you know, how we can design the roads. I mean, our, our roads were originally designed for traffic calming. There's trees growing out in the middle of them. And now, so, and then we start cutting those. You know?
So I'm gonna piggyback off of what you were talking about. So in all my initial research, when we were advocating for traffic calming measures. For Wood Creek Drive, a lot of them are just design principles. So when we're going into the road planning, it's a prime time to be. Working on this, not because we're going to pay more money for more stuff, it's that when they're designing the road changes. They keep streets narrow or like Mary Ross was talking about, we keep the street trees, even if the trees die. You want to keep those natural flowing mechanisms. We beef up our entrances. We add uh, like these radar signs were approved. Like so these are natural traffic calming things that are. This other thing that you go and pay more money for afterwards. And when I say beef up our entrances, maybe. You, when, when you have a very strong residential neighborhood entrance, kind of like Wood Creek Drive does in one spot. It cues people mentally that they're entering into a slower spot. And we lack that at our other, all of our, three of our other entrances. We don't have anything like that. So this is the kind of design stuff that we need to be looking at and talking about with, with the road improvements. And then I realized with, that you have to, but for us to authorize to have the engineers, which I get that we need Kate Freeze. Right, those are still our engineers who do traffic studies. Yeah, so for us to get there, we have to have some kind of packet to say, hey. We wanna move forward with, so that's the packet I'm doing, if that makes sense. I realize that we still would have to have traffic study.
Well, you would need, you would need a traffic study first before you can come with a packet. You can't propose a solution without, without the, 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 the stats and the data. Or whatever your proposal.
To authorize us going into that with Kate Freeze, what would you like to see in a packet?
Um, it would be a, it would be a, a motion to authorize city staff to contact Kate Freeze to um. Do a traffic study wherever, wherever and appropriate, and I can get a, an estimated amount of money. And so we could, yeah, and I've done, I've done like thirty years of these, probably over the last twenty years. Um it's chicken and the egg question, you know? It, it makes sense to say, we believe that bumps, designs, natural features would be appropriate here. In the context of your traffic city you're considering, we provide this feedback on, right? And that feedback might be, I know you wanted bumps here, but here's why that's not gonna work. Or here's, here's an alternative that we want to approach. But I, I think it makes sense to go to Kate Freeze, say you're what we're thinking, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, when, when we, I think when Kate Freeze gave their pitch, you know, initially you weren't here, but um. You know, I asked one of the, the principals, you know, if you have a background of the traffic, how do you, some kind of, uh, do you have a background in? Traffic calming design, traffic calming whatever. And oh yeah, we do it all the time. So I think it'd be probably a good start. I would like to see what, what Deborah's working on. Uh and I, I just wanna say antidote to the, you know, mowing the lawn is, is treacherous, man. I mean, you can get killed because you're just trying to turn around on the road and change your road or something. Mowing the mailbox, it sometimes is. Is outrageous. And I've seen families out there and with their kids or their dogs and I'm just going, God help them, you know? I've seen the same thing with people, the kids that are trying to get to their, their, you know, private, their Wembley golf team practice. Almost get run over by some day, you know, doing thirty five miles an hour and can't wait for a kid to drop off. I mean, it's, it's time to do something. And uh, so anyway, I'm, I'm pitching to the fire here. So let's kinda figure out mechanically how we do it. Maybe it starts with Kate Freeze. I'd like to see what Deborah's. Okay, uh and also Bob, you have anything to say? I'm usually just, there's a couple of them.
Uh, you recognize Bob? So there's, there's a couple of things. One is, when you talked, Deborah, about having speed humps with a single speed hump in each location. Because the best I've heard is three speed humps in each location so that people can't avoid them. And um, and emergency vehicles can get through easily.
So all that in the package I was working on was the concept of us buying these movable initial ones. And moving forward with, going through the process of installing those. They involve signs and all kinds, there's tabs in it, right? But that's something that we can do while we're waiting on the road. And then once the roads are in, a permanent speed bump could be placed there, right? Because there's these traffics, there's these things we've set up. We take those movable ones, then they can be used in other ways. It's not a wasted purchase. Um, because I worry about waiting till we're done with the roads and then it's this whole other thing. And I'd rather be incorporated in the designs of the roads. I'd rather us be moving in that direction now. And that's why. So the packet, all I was looking at there, like single, solid across bumps. Because I know that people like the little pads and the tables and those things better. And to me, that's a. Road paving post-construction thing. So that's what, wasn't where I was trying to go right now. Right now, I'm trying to establish. If we put speed bumps in the city, where should they go? Let's buy some temporary ones, start using those. Because people are freaking out and just rightfully so. They've been told for years there was no issue first, right? And we finally acknowledge there's an issue and now we're trying to move forward. The other thing I would like us to do is to move, is to, and I. We've talked to Platinum Panel, we've sent it. That was a long time ago, but somebody needs to start working on an overall city design for traffic calming.
I've already had my, my ideas about it. Speed humps work best at the, at the entrance of the city, not in the middle. But there's something else, well, a variable speed bump that people can use, we can use that would slow you, won't slow you down if you're going the speed limit. But will be a speed bump if you're going a little bit speed limit. And I don't know the cost of them, but I know that they're out there. It's kind of an ingenious idea to be able to reward people if we're going the correct speed and not reward people if they're going too fast.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna start a conversation. Um but uh, you know, unless you're bringing something brand new to the conversation, um can we? Not. I, I've got a motion, I mean.
I really would, um, my concern with this is that. Kate Freeze, if I, I don't want to do the road project next year, you know? Um, we need to, if we can somehow coordinate a study, but we need to go forward.
Yeah, no danger to that.
And so far, they have been very.
No danger in this.
And I don't think you have to use Kate Freeze. There are traffic and steering companies that just do this and nothing but this.
One more.
So I have a question, which is in this.
So I have a question, which is, in this book that, that has, you've read or seen lots of it, or no?
Like, like.
Okay, that is what I'm doing on my free week, uh, three day weekends, because I'm reading the whole book.
Um, so in this plan that we've sent, like, that we've discussed with K-3s, the new traffic spaces, is it most likely a traffic study part of this project already?
No.
Yeah.
Eight minutes.
All eight minutes.
It's all paper and stuff.
Correct. It is, it is the, um, doing core samples on the base, um, that sort of thing. Okay, um, I will, and I don't know kind of where, we did talk to K-3s about traffic calming measures. They were adamant not to do concrete or permanent structures on top of the new roads. They would, they suggested, uh, after the roads were done, to purchase whatever type of traffic calming devices we want. The reason for that is we need to go back and fix those roads. It's basically all they're doing is putting concrete on concrete or asphalt on asphalt, or just a bump. And I didn't think that we wanted a bump and they went against it. And so that'll come the, the traffic calming speed bumps were not in the proposal. It was only for the paving of the streets. But we could, we could do the, you know, if we wanna do a traffic study and look at the calming measures, we can do that as a separate project.
My very good question, are we allowed on this agenda item to make a motion on that one?
Yeah, that's traffic study. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor, what?
Well, I was gonna suggest a motion. I'm gonna be happy to, to make your input on it. And, uh, I, I was gonna make a motion that we direct the staff to discuss, um, with engineers, including K-3s. Talk to them about doing a traffic study and the traffic calming recommendations work with. And I, it may be K-3s, it may not be.
It won't be.
You love me?
No, it will not. It will not be K-3s.
Yeah, we have a.
It will get an outside work.
Motion to direct staff to.
I second.
Second, everybody, council member, permanent, to further conversation.
Do you want, can I make, to be this clear, do you want us to, um, come back with some prices before, uh, execution?
Yeah.
Or, or, or do you wanna give him a number?
I mean, I, if speed, if speed is.
He's done thirty of these.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, they're, they're, they're. Yeah, especially if you're doing a citywide thing.
Yeah, no, I think we're talking like fifteen thousand was what I was looking at. Uh, as like a, an ask, is what I was gonna ask us to invest fifteen thousand in these, which it sounds like K-3s and I are on the zig page, the, uh, speed bumps you install after the back.
Correct.
And, and, um, he's saying the study up to five figures. I'm saying, I think we should allot fifteen thousand to traffic calming purchases and.
If it's more than that, I will come back, or I'll give you, I'll just come back to the chat. That's, that's, that's the best decision. I'll, I'll know, I know, I, I know I have the bigger fifteen thousand. Let's see what we can get, fifteen thousand or less. Yeah.
Don't think this is an RFQ. I don't think you, you need RFQs for this one.
I would say no, and I would say to try to, I mean, I don't have the experience you have, but I don't feel like we need this massive study, you know what I mean? I feel like there's some kind of lower end sort of things that they could do and provide us enough to put in those speed bumps.
My, my experience, I'll be brief, is, is the cities, and, and I, I don't wanna create the perception that I know what I'm talking about. I know, I've been in the room. Um, we typically ask the companies to give us a good, better, best, right? Like, give us the, give us the five thousand dollar option, the ten thousand dollar option, the fifteen thousand dollar option. So how much we can accomplish each. Uh, my experience is often we're dealing with one or two specific streets and specific locations, you know, pretty easy. But it sounds like y'all have a handful of places that you, you wanna work. So I don't, I don't have a clear understanding. Kevin does VBA on this. I mean, you can Google Texas traffic engineering firms and you'll have ten different companies listed, you know, on a first range. But I've already sent him, I've already sent him some of the docs that I have.
And I also asked the, um, the mayor of them, work with them.
I should see you on it.
Yeah, I see what you're doing. That's really cool.
It's awesome, yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, me and, me and, and I'm fully, we'll work together.
We have a deadline.
Circles. Oh, so they can pull this on you again.
Um.
At least they get a.
Can we go, um?
I mean, I mean, I, I could, I can help you create a, a one paragraph email to send to any different engineering companies or however many, see what feels appropriate. Uh, I, I don't wanna try to predict when they're gonna respond.
I was gonna say, is.
I would say June fourteenth, but I don't want to.
I'll say at the end of the month. He thinks it's thirty days, not a meeting, yeah.
Over to Jim.
Can we shoot for June fourteenth and it might be up for work?
Yeah, we did, let's, let's do. Works up the week after.
Yeah.
And so I will stop what I'm doing, correct? Because, okay, I don't need to submit anything tomorrow for the next.
No, I mean, you got, if you got data, there's.
I mean, it's, it's not gonna be past what they're doing, these companies, you know what I mean? It's just the initial.
All they do, and that's good. I'll, uh, I'll forward you what I just, you can get it from Kevin.
I'll forward it to Brent. Me and Brick will work together, uh, find out some awesome, some more information, bring it back to Council. Hopefully June fourteenth, that's what we're shooting for, if we can get some responses with maybe some costs and some parameters and see which direction, if you wanna just do the whole city or just do a couple streets. And then we can kind of go from there to an area to go.
I was just looking at, um, the main streets, right? Uh. Yeah, I know. I wasn't gonna do all the little pull this out, but I was, in addition to the main streets.
Front lane, back street.
I was looking at busting lane because the parents specifically was like, for some reason, our road gets a lot of speeding. And it's like this double curve on a hill and people just go crazy. And it's not necessarily people who live there. So that was the one. Aggressive lane. It was like the one where it's add-on.
Yeah, but okay, I'm just making sure that it was the loop.
Right down the hill and.
Right.
They've got their speed up.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Let me call the vote, please. Motion on the floor is to direct staff to get information about the traffic study and recognition, and recommendation of the traffic calming.
What the additional information where it says connect the prices less than fifteen thousand, um, for execution by the.
Well, we're gonna come back to Council the matter of.
I think it's fine in the discussion, and we, you understand that.
Yeah, yeah, me and, yeah, I got, it's nothing to be. I believe in operating.
There you go, yeah.
That's what I do.
I'm also getting heat out here.
Very nice.
Very low.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Mayor of this number, Foley.
Aye.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Biscummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bud.
All right, thank you all. Monica, I wanna thank you. You've been giving me speeches since we were young and can't get to be here.
No, I, I, I watched Charlie get hit by a car, a teenager, so everybody. No, you're not staying out there with a friend and a friend goodbye, but boy, you know, it, you know, kids are kids.
Yeah.
And, and, um, yeah, that made a real impression and, yeah, it's scary. And it's real scary in our street. It's a narrow street.
Yeah.
People walk down there with their dogs and their kids and stuff.
We're getting, we're getting rid of them.
And, yeah, and people left.
Uh, we have an executive session, um, I don't, I don't think it will.
You wanna take a break for executive session?
That would be wonderful.
This move into the. Right, this is a personnel thing, and I think it's, um, you know, pretty much Council only. Um, Roger, you're welcome, but where do you go home?
I mean, I, I'm not gonna leave unless I'm.
I'm gonna fuck around, never know.
Yeah, I'll be nodging, but.
Uh, if you're an executive, we can off the camera. For me to go to my office. No, we're not gonna be here.
So, uh, I need it, but not turn it off.
Well.
There's too many of us. It's too. There's too many of us, it's been that tiny office. It's gonna crush a cupcake.
There is a, there is a. There is a.
You're gonna turn it up a little bit, too.
That's what I'm doing. That's what I'm doing.
Yeah, I've read so many ways it's not there. Country? All right, we're going to come out of executive, it's in between or was. Um, and I will entertain a motion, um, regarding personnel matters.
Mayor Man.
Yes.
I move that we award.
Hold it. I'm sorry. I was going to say we need to accept the result of the.
Okay, I move that we accept the result of the review of contract or, uh, review of performance for city manager rule. And that we award a six percent increase in salary.
Second. Second by Mayor Bratton Foley. Discussion.
I'm just going to give my justification. Uh, three percent was the minimum mandatory. Uh, my suggestion was to double that. Uh, part of it being the loss of the car stipend coming. So this essentially continues the car stipend indefinitely for you. Uh, with the understanding that again, there's another performance review in six months and there's always an opportunity to give additional increases at that point.
Other comments? None. Call it over. Any other comments? None. Call it over.
Mayor Bratton Foley.
Aye.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Crimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Garrett.
Aye.
Councilmember David Lang.
Aye.
You know, it's very late. Drinks on you, man.
I move that we adjourn.
I second.
We are adjourned. Ten seventeen, you have the.
Yes.
Thanks for the, uh, thanks everybody for all the. Um, and like I said, if anybody wants, um, those results, it's giving both of them.
It was the wide burn that did a further do.